Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting of Thursday, July 20, 2023. We are proud to call this meeting to order and then go to our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the traditional ancestral unceded territory of the Chumash, Tongva, Fernando de Nio, Tatavium, and First Nations on which we are learning, educating, and living. With that, we will also do the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will ask Ms. Tiffany Maxwell if she will come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and a bit of a surprise request by the board president, so with her deference and, you know, agreement not to hurt me later, so appreciate it.
All right. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Maxwell, for putting up with me today. With that, Ms. Quintero, if you could take the role.
Member Tabit?
Present.
Member Ponser Kamkar?
Present.
Clerk Aga Khanian?
Here.
Vice President Weisberg?
Present.
President Ferguson?
Present. Okay, we do have, thank you, Ms. Quintero, we do have all five board members present, so we will proceed with the business of the meeting. I will move to item five, reporting on closed session, there's no items to disclose, any actions of the board. We will move to item six, adjustments to the agenda. Are there any adjustments to our agenda this evening? Dr. Paramo?
Yes, sir, I was going to ask if we could present our new Director of Special Education, but I don't see her here. If she comes in, we might, if we can do that, that would be great.
Okay, let's communicate just to the side if we can, or through Ms. Tabit, who's got the corner pocket here.
Yes, sir, appreciate it.
And we'll introduce if she happens to make it tonight, so thank you very much. Any other adjustments to the agenda? Seeing none, I do want to, you know, reiterate for public disclosure, so Executive Committee met, and we are going to be moving forward with changes to the public comment period, so you will see changes brought to the next board meeting's agenda where periods of public comment will be available on agenda items first, and then at the end of the meeting will be a period of public comment for items that are not on the agenda but are within the purview of the Board of Education. So you will see that change coming up, we want to make sure that we are publicizing that change, we are not doing this in the dark of night, we are doing it in a televised meeting, and really making sure that the public knows. One, if you are going to come to a Board of Education meeting to speak on an issue that is before the Board, that you will have priority and the ability to communicate on those issues, and for those issues that are more long-term, longstanding, you will have time as well, but after the business of the meeting is conducted. So these are changes coming to a meeting near you, and we want to be as public and as transparent in that pursuit, so thank you very much for that, so that will be an adjustment to our next agenda. Items for future agendas. I will ask that the Board, or that the staff coordinate a special meeting of the Board, a closed session meeting on the appointment of a interim superintendent, so we can meet and confer on that item. Any additional items? Seeing none, okay, we will move on to item number eight A, which is our request to address the Board. Right now, we do have a number of cards in front of us, we will continue to accept cards until the last speaker has concluded their remarks. With that, we will start with Annie from, Annie. Followed by Lisa.
So it's hard to believe that it's been less than two months since I first came to this room to voice my opposition to the development of high-density housing at Horace Mann. There has been a lot said during that time, so I want to take a moment to clarify a few things. We are all well aware that Perkins Eastman proposal, which was approved by this Board on June 1, is a housing evaluation, and the Board has not voted on actual development plans yet. But let's also be very clear that what you approved on June 1 is not an evaluation of universal housing, there is no mention of open spaces, it does not encompass existing facilities needs of Horace Mann or any other BUSD property, it does not include any type of community engagement prior to issuing the assessment, it is only and solely a housing evaluation of Horace Mann. So now that we're on the same page, hopefully you can start listening to our community's concerns instead of trying to politic this by twisting the narrative. So Ms. Ponser Kamkar, I have to admit, your quiet approach to this matter concerned me initially, but then I took a step back and I realized that you're the only person on this Board who has not already made a decision, and who has been receptive to our community's concerns before forming that opinion, so I want to thank you for that and share some food for thought. So this isn't the first time that the Board of Education has considered housing at Horace Mann. As it turns out, it was considered at least once before, and the Board decided against it because the parcel of land, this parcel of land is the last undeveloped property BUSD has. If you ever need another school, there will be nowhere else to build it. That was the rationale many years ago, but it seems to hold true now more than ever as we see a surge in housing developments across Burbank. Second, during the June 22 meeting, the Board was presented with assessment results for students enrolled in BUSD. Seventy percent are not proficient in math, over a third are not proficient in English language arts, and while I heard many excuses, some like COVID, which are legitimate, but I didn't hear any solutions. Instead, the Board is looking at housing that best-case scenario takes the better part of a decade to build, although while this generation of kids don't know how to read or compute. Third, despite what was said by Mr. Ferguson on June 1, Horace Mann is the only property being assessed for housing under AB 2295, when in fact there are other properties owned by BUSD that are underutilized in a community that can sustain it, such as a community day school. The community day school is not in a high danger fire zone, is conveniently located next to public transport, already has an existing infrastructure that will not be overburdened by conversion to housing, and only has 13 in release. So riddle me this, why is it that Horace Mann is the only property being assessed if truly this is for teachers and not Mr. Ferguson's haphazard attempt at a political platform? So Dr. Aga Khanian and Ms. Tabit, you are the two Board members that have made it most clear that you do not support the diversion of district resources in this fashion, yet you've voted unanimously for this assessment. In fact, when I look back at the voting record for this Board, there are hardly any instances in recent history where the vote hasn't been unanimous. You can understand why that concerns us. If you truly are against the development of high-density housing at Horace Mann, we invite you to read our petition at www.changed.org/91504united and consider signing it. Much of the language in the petition comes directly from the Perkins Eastman housing evaluation. We currently have over 1,175 Burbank voters who have signed the virtual petition, and another 45 who prefer to sign the hard copy. Interestingly, two of the signers are prior school Board presidents, one is the current Burbank City Planning Commissioner, and hundreds more are parents, teachers, police officers, and firefighters. Your name will be amongst good company of Burbank voters. Last thing I want to say is that nearly every government contract has baked into it a provision called termination for convenience. This is so you, as elected officials, can be good stewards of public funds, that you don't continue expenditure of taxpayer dollars for an initiative that no longer makes sense. Ask your lawyers about termination for convenience, because now that you know what you approved on June 1, we renew our request. Agenda this item for a future Board meeting, cancel the June 1 contract amendment with Perkins Eastman, commit to no housing at Horace Mann, and engage the community prior to entering any future contracts related to the development of the Horace Mann property.
Our next speaker is Lisa, followed by Arpinay.
My name is Lisa, and I've been a Burbank resident for 30 years, and I'm here for the fourth time to express that I am opposed to development of high-density housing at Horace Mann. Over the last six weeks, the Board and the residents, individually and collectively, have spent a good deal of time talking about the assessment for a housing development at the Horace Mann school site. It's added to your full plate and redirected our own focus, energy, and time, too. It's unfortunate that this has been necessary, as it could have all been avoided if you engaged our community before entering into the housing evaluation contract with Perkins Eastman. Several of you have reiterated that this is an assessment and not a plan to develop. We understand that. We also understand that you've engaged a global design and architecture firm to conduct the assessment pursuant to Assembly Bill 2295. This is an Assembly Bill that permits for high-density housing, a fact that we haven't heard from you since June 1, when you approved the contract, both to us in this room as well as in your recent communications to parents. To that end, Dr. Weisberg, I want to respectfully direct my comments to you. I have watched you sit in protests during the Pledge of Allegiance at many meetings now. At the June 15 Board meeting, you explained why you choose to do so, and while I understand it's your choice, I would have hoped that holding an elected position, you would do much more than that, which is a symbolic gesture. Instead, here's what I've seen happen over the course of the last six weeks. First, on June 1, you voted to approve the housing evaluation at Horace Mann after being informed that it was not properly agendized according to the Brown Act. Second, during the same June 1 meeting, Mr. Ferguson indicated that there were a total of three BUSD properties which were being evaluated for housing. When you were asked about this last week, you acknowledged Mr. Ferguson's statement was false, that there's only one housing evaluation, and that is at Horace Mann. Third, on June 15, having received two hours of public comment opposing the development of high-density housing, you committed to having a study session by the next regular Board meeting, which is today. No study session has been scheduled, and you just informed us that it would not take place for at least another six months. Fourth, instead of learning from what's happening in neighboring districts like Glendale, the San Fernando Valley, and all over Southern California, and being cautious to avoid those same mistakes, on June 22, the very meeting after Horace Mann community came to this Board to calmly and professionally voice our opposition, you proposed to change the public comment time in a clear effort to silence. Personally, I can't understand how you sit for the flag and protest on one end, but would limit the accessibility of time for anyone who has a concern when there's just so much going on in our community. Number five, on June 2, we sent a Public Records Act request to the Superintendent's Office for this Board's economic interest forms, conflict of interest disclosures, and campaign contribution lists. These are legally required documents, most of which get completed annually. Despite the fact that there's a 10-day response deadline, we have yet to receive those documents, and the only response that we've gotten after multiple follow-ups is that the Superintendent's Office doesn't know where they are. Number six, on June 5 and 15, this Board permitted speakers to extend their public comment time beyond five minutes. Yet on the 22, the Board denied Annie the same benefit because she was here to talk about Horace Mann. It looks like you get to pick and choose who you want to hear. There have been many times when the audience has simply booed, or made a comment out of turn, and has been reprimanded to be able to set an example for the younger generation. What kind of example do these things set? Misrepresentations, failing to comply with the most essential laws to ensure transparency and accountability, restricting public comment, selectively imposing rules, all while putting student education standards on the back burner while promoting political agendas. We're asking you to take a stand, put the students' education, their safety, and existing facilities first, cancel the assessment of high-density housing development at Horace Mann. Thank you.
So with that, the first two speakers, you know, there are a lot of rules, generally one of them is that we are not pointing out Board members and targeting them single-handedly. That happened with the first two speakers. I am going to respectfully ask that we not carry that forward, although that is not the standard. So if you want to continue to do that, here comes Mr. Schlossman with his card, so I am getting ahead of this before he reprimands me, right? We do have rules generally. I would hope that you would observe that in not targeting individuals and that you direct comments through the chair. If that is not what you hope to do tonight, that rule has not been maintained, we will not call that out. But that is my failure in that moment to my colleagues, so I will own that, but asking that that respectfully be observed tonight as we continue through most of this public comment, or this public comment tonight. Our next speaker is Arpinay. Good evening, followed by Alice Hansen.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Arpinay Markarian, and I am 30-year resident of Burbank. I am here to object high-density housing at Horace Mann, for all the reasons everyone else mentioned in the last six weeks. I'm not going to repeat all the reason, I am sure it's on record, so please consider and think about our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alice Hansen, followed by Carlos de Verona. Okay, excellent. Come on down, the price is right.
Good evening, BOE. My name's Alice Hansen, I'm a Burbank resident, homeowner, and taxpayer, and I'm voicing my concern over this disastrous assessment by BUSD BOE for their proposed multi-unit project as allowed by AB 2295 of the school property at Horace Mann Childcare Center. Currently, it seems, the trend now by those governing bodies of this state is to abolish neighborhoods with single-family homes and force cities to accommodate more residents than the base would allow, and not everybody needs to live here. Burbank was once a community of single-family homes and multi-unit apartments that were size-appropriate and included parking. This also changed, and not for the better. Governing bodies and lobbyists have approved and now allow multiple ADUs on single-family home sites, as well as group rehab residents built strictly for individual profit for both the developers and the property owners, as is the case of the 3,000 block of North Frederick Street. I would like to know how much money you anticipate receiving for the area at Horace Mann. Also, will BUSD BOE decide who gets the contract to buy the development of this multi-unit project? Will BUSD BOE monitor the logistical for this folly, or hire yet more consultants for those issues? Will Burbank property owners get our taxes raised to pay for additional water, electric, and sewer connections to accommodate this multi-unit complex? AB 2295 is not for education rental only, the units can in fact be rented to others other than just the BUSD workforce, as noted if you read several paragraphs down. If housing for school staff in Burbank is necessary, then other sites should be considered as Horace Mann is not a good choice. There was a brush fire in the hills nearby last week. I suggest BUSD BOE, instead of becoming developers, should focus on achieving better test scores for the children they educate, stopping the exodus of instructors and principals, and fixing internal personnel issues, all of which have been noted in the media. Not every state decision is a good one. This could and can be changed, as we can also change our elected representatives. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Our next speaker is Carlos de Verona, followed by Lynn Wetherwax.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for hearing me out.
Good to see you again.
I'm with this group, I love this group. I'm not as prepared, well-prepared as they are, but I support everything they're saying, and we're not going to stop, we can't allow this to happen to our community, and we're growing, and we're going to do something about it. I hope you join us, because this is your community, too, and it can't be better, and we should strive to make it better, and I don't see how this measure is going to help us at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Wetherwax, followed by Tara Wa, who is not coming in via Zoom, by the way, so just.
Hello, I'm another concerned citizen, I live on Buena Vista Street, I think everything they've said I'm in total agreement with. Please do not go forward with this, we already have so much traffic, so many issues, and also, as they reiterated, we really, as a Board of Education, we really should look at STEM, right, preparing our students for the future, correct? I'm an instructor as well, so I just hope that we won't move forward with this, and I would appreciate if you all would sign our petition, too, because we actually have been canvassing our neighborhood, and I've met many new neighbors, and they're all in opposition, they're all signing the petitions, so we're strong, and we're going to keep on coming here, we're persistent. We're going to keep on coming here, a lot of us are semi-retired, part-time workers, so we will be here. All right, thank you.
Excellent. Great, great. I have two, I have two sets of cards. Yes, Tara, Tara Wa, if you could come up next, sorry, I have multiple cards filled out for some folks, anyway, go ahead.
Hi, there, members of the Board, members of the Administration, thank you all so much for being here tonight. I'm ostensibly here to talk about Agenda Item 10AA, but as a resident of 91504, I just wanted to also say that this group's representation is not representative of all of us who live in that zip code. Many of us have bought into this zip code because we understand the dynamics of this city are changing. We are newer residents, we do not expect that the politics from 30 years ago and the neighborhoods of 30 years ago to stay the same, change is here. So I respect that this group is bringing to the attention of the Board what their priorities are, but frankly, as a fellow resident, it is irresponsible for you all to come here and then not propose a single feasible alternative. You want to say no to Horace Mann? No problem. How about a parcel tax? Propose some alternatives. I can tell you what my address is, I live at 500 University Avenue, never seen any dialogue from you guys. So come on over to 5th and University, happy to provide an alternative. The next thing I will say is that on Item 10AA, I would absolutely like to address the proposed approval of the agreement to approve the contract with Hatch &amp; Cesario. That is my main reason for being here tonight. What I would like to do is not to say that you shouldn't approve it, but rather that you table it and get more information. I would like to encourage this Board, just as you are relooking at the fiscal and administrative aspects of the district which have needed overhaul, please include this among them. Hatch &amp; Cesario has been contracted with BUSD since 2015. Do your due diligence on them, do not rubber stamp this, please. We have transparent, we'd like to see transparent billing, would like to see case records, wins and losses, would like to see how many of the due process filings are ending up as settlement agreements. I would like you to ask, what are other districts' experiences with her, especially within the SULPA, and also look in the SULPA and see who they are using to represent these students? Because again, it is imperative that you guys find out and actually investigate what the record of this particular firm is and how they're performing. Please do some oversight. I'm certainly happy to share my individual experiences with this team and ways in which I feel like personally and professionally this firm has not been able to deliver, and the ways in which I feel violated on behalf of my son, but I will say this, I would ask you to solicit other parent opinions. It's not about just me, I'm happy to provide you with audio recordings of IEPs so you can hear the manner in which things are conducted, happy to provide you with reviews of the ways in which due process filings are conducted, but on behalf of the parents who have students who are receiving IEPs, and who ultimately may or may not have to engage in some sort of litigation with this district, please review the firm you are using for this. There are alternatives which are much, in my opinion, much better and more collaboratively oriented in terms of mediating, trying to find solutions that do not involve just going to due process and settlement agreements. So I'd ask that this Board table this tonight, ask some relevant questions of the Administration, and come back ready to defend that decision, if you do want to approve that, with some information and explain why that firm is the best choice. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Schlossman, followed by Rose Kay.
Hey, good evening to you, good evening, everybody. Mr. Ferguson, you know, we all, you're insulting, you know, all of us have a right to redress our government officials, individually and collectively, and if you don't like the heat, get out of the kitchen, it just comes down to that, it's that simple. Shameful, shameful. I wasn't even going to speak, I had some stuff prepared, but you had to stick it. Okay, you've referred to me as somebody who likes to cause chaos, and the woman sitting next to you has referred to me as someone with nothing better to do. So let's talk about that for a minute. I've pointed out.
Mr. Schlossman, that is not within the purview of the Board of Education, your behavior. So if you could talk about something that is within the purview of the Board of Education, that would get you back on topic.
Okay, first of all, I want you to reset my time because you've interrupted.
I am not, your behavior is not under the control or the purview of the Board of Education, so you said.
Of course it is. I'm entitled, I'm at this podium, and I'm entitled to speak to my elected officials, individually and collectively. If you don't like it, resign.
Okay.
And don't interrupt me again. You're out of line.
Okay.
Go back to one, go back to basic 101.
Okay, so you can continue your time now, go ahead.
And reset my time, please. I pointed out failures of Mr. Hill, that only took me two and a half years to get rid of him, I'm still here. I discovered Ms. Weinberg and Mr. Paramo like to erase public records. I discovered Ms. Weinberg is pushing for another parcel tax without any public input, and you're supposed to, before you make up your mind, you're supposed to listen to what people have to say, and I read dozens of your emails, and you're pushing for another parcel tax already. I observed Ms. Weinberg will not stand for our flag salute despite swearing an official oath to the allegiance of America, it's problematic. I worked to defeat a parcel tax, saving my community over $108 million, I'm proud of that. I notified the houses surrounding Horace Mann with accurate information, Ms. Weisberg, accurate information, about the potential development. I've talked about all the waste and mismanagement within this district, I've pointed out the horrible treatment of our custodial staff over the years, and I've been a good listener, Mr. Ferguson, I've listened to you tell us that you barely finished high school, I listened to you tell us that you now work for Mr. Krikorian, and I wonder how you got that job? I wonder if you took a civil service test, I wonder if it's nepotism, and I wonder if it's cronyism, and I wonder how you make over $80,000 a year being a special advisor, and that's your title on Mr. Paul Krikorian's website. So what is it, payola? Is it, yes, that's what I'm saying, because you tell our kids to stay in school, you tell our kids to get an education, but you didn't. So I'm going to use my last minute, and I'm going to go back to, you know, the First Amendment and how we're allowed to come here and say things that you disagree with. It's our opinion, and if we think it has something to do with the Board of Education, then we're entitled to talk about it. It's not what you think, you're supposed to be a good listener, this is when we speak, and everything that I've said, that I've talked about here, and that these folks have talked about, has to do with the Board of Education, and I want to respond quickly to this one lady who's critical of the district. I don't know about these other folks, but me personally, I've met with Ms. Cookta, I met with Mr. Hill, I met with the officials here, and I've talked about alternatives to housing here in Burbank, I've offered solutions, and they've fallen on deaf ears. Now you folks own a parcel right across the street from Borough's High, why don't you start with that one parcel? Why don't you whack it up into some four units like everybody else is doing these days, and start there? And if you want to help and invite some teachers, start with that one parcel, that's already our one. Thank you for your attention, and rethink your position, Mr. President, on public speaking here. This is, you're so far out of line, you don't even know it, and be more polite to people because you cut people off, and you pick and choose, and it's offensive, be kind.
Thank you. On to Rose Kay, followed by Adam Kay.
On to Rose Kay, followed by Aram Kay.
Good evening. My name is Rose. I am a Burbank resident and a parent of two kids who attend Burbank Unified School District. I recently became aware of the contract with Perkins Eastman for housing evaluation at Horak Mann, and I'm here to say I am opposed to the development of housing at this site. In looking at the proposal, I was shocked to see that nothing in the scope of work includes any type of community engagement. My Burbank neighbors and other BUSD parents were also surprised. In fact, the Board's commitment to provide 30-day notice is wholly inadequate. In speaking with my neighbors and other Burbank Unified School District parents, they overwhelmingly do not support housing at Horak Mann. The reasons were, number one, the Board of Education should focus their resources on improving education, school facilities, and student safety. Housing is an unnecessary shift of priorities at this critical time in the school district's operations. Number two, strategic high-density housing should be built near public transportation hubs and economic opportunities. In contrast, the Horak Mann site is a steep hike to and from the nearest bus stop, miles from a metro station, and is car-dependent for any meaningful employment opportunities. Number three, the Horak Mann site is in a fire zone with streets surrounding it being single-lane in either direction. High-density housing in this space would create a significant health and safety concerns for residents and firefighters. Number four, with the expected surge of housing development in Burbank over the next few years, converting an educational facility to housing is short-sighted and lacks strategic thought. Number five, the area being assessed includes a sanctuary for wild animals. They will lose their habitat if the area is approved for such a development. We are appalled that you would spend a single dollar of school district money to evaluate housing instead of focusing those resources on student education. We are asking you to realign your priorities and cancel the June 1 contract amendment with Perkins Eastman for housing evaluation at the Horak Mann site and engage the community prior to entering into any future contracts related to the development of Horak Mann property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Aram Kay. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Aram, and I'm here to say that I oppose the development of high-density housing at the Horace Mann property located at 3401 Scott Road. We are asking you cancel the housing evaluation being conducted by Perkins Eastman and engage our community before entering with any contracts related to development of the Horace Mann I'll wait until you finish, and so I can... You listening? Alive a few blocks from Horace Mann with my wife and two sons. Both of my boys have attended Burbank schools, and my family has always been a supporter of Burbank Unified School District. That's why it came us a complete shock when I heard that BUSD had entered into the contract to evaluate housing at the Horace Mann property without engaging the community. As a parent to student of the BUSD, we receive newsletters, emails, and updates regularly about all the different initiatives BUSD is doing. We read those because we want to be informed, parents. You did not provide any information about this, what's happening, basically. After we were informed by our community and after you entered into the contract, that's how we find out about this. In talking about this with our Burbank neighbors and friends, most of which are also BUSD parents, it really seems like, like to hide this and has broken the trust we have to school district. I hope you work to repair the trust by canceling the June 1 contract amendment with the Perkins Eastman for a housing evaluation at the Horace Mann site and engage the community prior to entering into any future contracts related to development of the Horace Mann property. I just want to say, you know, I'm a neighbor. I live very close by, and I respect all of you guys because you guys all have a job to do in the neighborhood and what you guys do in it. But at least sometime, you guys, we, we deserve to get listened once and appreciate what you guys do and just do the right thing at least once, you know? Because I'm sure a lot of you guys not living close by, and you know how important that when you live. Sometime when we drive in that neighborhood and the kids, the parents are dropping the kids to the school, a lot of time I see like, like very small, almost the kids get crushed there because people are driving fast. And now this is gonna, the, the housing department is going to bring a lot of kind of people in that neighborhood, and you don't know who's going to come and live there and what kind of outcome we will have in that neighborhood. I appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. And our, and our next speaker is Nicole Jerecki.
Good evening, President Ferguson, members of the Board, Acting Superintendent Paramo, members of the district staff. My name is Nicole Jerecki. I am a PE teacher at Dolores Huerta and the BTA president. I would like to thank BUSD, especially Tiffany Maxwell and Payroll for getting the 1% off-schedule bonus out in the U.S. mail. I know our members are thankful and especially looking forward to the 7% retro in August. We hope that we can get those out as soon as possible. I was curious about the Biassa reclass final that costs $498,000. I just had some questions. Can you tell me about how the salary placement came to be? Is this amount an increase in the salary schedule from what they had from before? Can you tell me how the BUSD reclassification committee came to these decisions? So I'm just looking for some information on that. Okay, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Any other speakers for public comment? Seeing none, seeing none. We'll close public comment and we'll go to staff responses. And then it does appear that our, we'll do that after our responses to public comment.
Thank you. So. I want to begin by acknowledging all the, the folks in the, in the community that came forward to talk about the potential of Horace Mann and the high-density housing. It's, it's really clear to me how passionate you are about this, and I want to validate that and acknowledge it. And I want to say that I think that, given the potential for a project, having your concerns listened to is going to be really important. So I appreciate you being here and coming to the podium and expressing what those concerns are. Lisa, I know there have been several public records requests that have come forward. The difficulty I have is the one that you're speaking of didn't come directly to me, and so to the best of my knowledge, I thought that all the public records requests have been addressed. So if you could please email this request to me, I will make sure that you get the documents that you are requesting. I appreciate that. Tara, obviously, I will take direction from the Board. I do know that we use not just one, but several law firms to address our special ed needs. I, I'm willing to take direction from the Board, and if we need to bring data forward, we're willing to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking to my colleagues, Ms. Tabit.
Thank you, President Ferguson. Thank you to the many community members who came down tonight to share your, well, all of you shared an opposition to the Perkins, I can't remember the name of that company, Eastman, thank you, report that we will be getting back in, in December. And you've certainly been heard. And I'm sure you'll, all will be back and more, and you are always welcome, of course. So thank you for sharing your thoughts. Nicole, Mr. Becky, Madam BTA president, thanks for coming down and really for thanking Tiffany Maxwell for, I mean, Tiffany, thank you so much for the work you do for our employees. It's been endless, it seems, the last year or so, and you've just done an amazing job. So thank you.
My department also, that's my team.
And your team. Thank you. I wish, I know, no one wants to come to a school board meeting, right? So thank you for that. Thank you very much. And happy summer to everybody. I hope so far everyone's had a restful, relaxing time, and school is just around the corner, and hopefully everybody is rested and geared up for a new and exciting school year. As an old teacher, that, that statement, you know, teachers have all these little sayings that they say, but their two favorite days are the first day and the last day, right? Depending on how your school year went. But I loved every single day of teaching, so anyway, the first day is coming, and I hope everybody is resting and relaxing and getting ready for that. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spencer Campcar.
Thank you, President Ferguson, and Board Member Tabit, I'm with you. I, I look forward to the new school supply smell every year. I'm very excited about that. Thank you for all the speakers for coming out. We've heard you. I appreciate the data. I appreciate that the folks are engaged here. Thank you, Ms. Waugh. That was good context. I did not see your email until we were in closed session today, but I think that's, that's all very helpful. Those are all very helpful questions we can ask. I also wanted to say, I know that we do have, in the spirit of the school year starting, we've got our governance committee starting up soon. And so that was something that Ms. Tabit and I spent some time on with a community member this week about what our proposed calendar is going to look like for the academic committee. We're very excited about it. And I think that's all I've got. I would just say that, again, thank you to the public speakers who came out. I really do appreciate it. I do want to remind folks, I don't, I don't mind if you address us individually. I would like to make sure that we're addressing ideas and not tearing people down, right? None of us up here are getting paid much to be doing this. I think I got my, my notification for my $468 for the month, which is not nothing, but doesn't necessarily represent the amount of time that I, that I spend up here. So I would, I'd appreciate kind of a assumption of best intentions here because I do think we're all trying to serve the community. So thank you.
Dr. Eric Conian.
Thank you. I do want to thank also our speakers for coming forward. I, I hear you. I, I understand your concerns. But I also want to remind everyone that, you know, mixing math scores and an assessment of a property that's owned by the district, do not mix the two. You know, teachers are working very hard in our district. Math is a concern not only in K-12, it's a problem in college, in university. The education system has changed, and as a college professor, I can tell you, you know, it has nothing to do with us looking at a property that we own and trying to assess it. No one is talking about development here. But I also respectfully ask you, in the sake of our teachers who work very hard, understand that what you're doing, you're insulting our teachers based on something that has to do with an assessment of a property that we have not decided. And so I don't know where you're getting your data, but we're going to build homes, and I have friends and family who live up there. So be a little respectful, and I do agree with my colleague. Pointing out individuals is not going to make this better. We're here to bounce off ideas. We hear you. I've already said where I stand. But at the same time, I always believe that, you know, through conversations, we can achieve certain things that otherwise would have been impossible. And to me, that's called progress, and education creates progress. So let us respect our educators, work together, and come up with ideas that will help everyone. But again, I also appreciate you coming forward. I understand your concerns. But we are, we do hear you. We are listening to you. But again, please, be a little respectful when it comes to these conversations. No one is here to pointing out people. No one is here to, you know, you know, break down our education system that some of our teachers work so hard. And trust me, I love math, and I can tell you, it's a concern of mine too, but it's not the district. It has nothing to do with what we're doing. It's a big issue running across right now in our nation. Math scores are nationally down, and we're trying to address that from K-12 and moving forward. But again, my door is always open. You can call me, you can email me. And then as far as, you know, talking about attorneys, we have choices here. So yes, we evaluate these individuals. It's not like we sit there and we just make a decision based on what we believe in. But I do want to thank everyone for being here tonight. It's a hot day. Stay out of the heat, and thank you very much.
Excellent. Dr. Weisberg.
Thank you. Thank you to everybody who spoke. I'm on Facebook like a lot of people in this room, so I'm real clear on what people think of me most of the time, and that's okay. Annie, I really enjoyed our meeting with Mr. Applebaum and Mr. Akobian. I hope you shared some of the other things that we talked about, so I wanted to share a few things just because they weren't discussed during public comment. I absolutely said that there was going to be a study session. I did not say it would be between board meetings. And what I expressed to Annie is that we don't have anything to study right now. When we get the information back, the goal is to do the study within one week of receiving the information so that you and we have time to read it and process it. So the study session will happen when there's literally something to study. Getting together now to talk would be very similar to public comment in that we wouldn't have new information. So just as we talked about previously, it's coming, and I also let Annie know that if there, it does end up being a delay from the December date, that we'll send out the email to the mailing list that I hope everybody here is on and let you know if it's going to be extended. I also made it really clear, and I said this in the meeting, that I felt comfortable speaking for the Board about this, I think I still do, that our priority is first and foremost, the places where our students and teachers learn and work. So housing, this, this assessment, is not the number one priority. Let's say somebody comes back and says, this is great, let's do it. We're also doing a facilities master plan, which is what this is part of. The repairs we need to make to our schools to make sure that our students and our teachers and our staff are safe and can learn is the number one priority. And I told you I'd say it on the dais, and I will, and I'll say it anywhere, all the time. Number one priority. So I really liked hearing those of you come up and read from the letter that talked about score, test scores in math and English. Absolutely. And I love that there's that investment. I appreciate, I think, Aram and Rose, your parents in the district. I don't know who else on, who spoke tonight is, but it's great to see people who aren't parents here, and I hope that after all of this is done, you'll continue to be invested in our test scores and STEM and all of these really important things because that's what is important to us as well. And that kind of segues to the, the public comment shift. So again, I know that there's not an assumption of best intentions, and that's okay. I can't change your mind. All I can do is share honestly the motivation behind things. So it's our job as the Board of Education to do the business of the district. So that means an enormous amount of stuff, if any of you had a chance to look at the agenda tonight, we have really important things that we're trying to get done. We had, the way it used to be was the first round of public comment was for agenda items specific, second was for within the jurisdiction of the Board. During COVID, we switched that because so many people had general fears and concerns. We're moving it back because right now, we're not able to do the business of the Board until sometimes 10:00 or 10:30 at night. We haven't reduced the number of public comment periods. We haven't reduced the number of minutes you get to speak. It's still five, unlike our, our council, which is three, and most other surrounding districts, which is also three. So the goal is not to silence anyone, but the goal is also to make sure that the work that we do serves our teachers, our students, and our staff because that's what we were elected to do. It doesn't mean to shut out opposition because, trust me, if you've come to other board meetings, there's opposition to everything that we do. And that's okay. So it's not about silencing. I think perhaps it is about making sure that we are directing the first part of public comment to specific things that impact our teachers, our students, and our staff. Aram, you brought up an interesting point where you talked about you weren't sure who would be in the housing. There were a lot of good questions about size, space, what about the wildlife, what about fire, what about traffic? That's exactly why we're asking for the assessment. I said to Annie in the meeting, I don't have a vision or plan because I haven't seen the information yet, and I'm intentionally not. So I have not made up my mind about anything, nor will I, until I see a report that gives me more information. Can't convince anybody of these things. I can just share with you the honest truth. things. I can just share with you the honest truth and, you know, sort of reiterate with what Ms. Ponser Campcar said, which is, we're up here because we are deeply committed to public education. I'm a teacher. Dr. Agger Conian's a teacher. Shar was a teacher, I believe, Abby, Utah. Steve went through these schools and continues to educate in the world of civics, among many other areas. So we're here because we care, not because we're trying to shut people down. So I know you'll be back. I look forward to it. Ms. Wa, thank you so much. I know we're going to talk about this when we come back to the agenda item. But as always, I appreciate how much time and energy you invest and how many details you share. It's really helpful for us. And Mr. Becky, I know that we're also going to talk about the questions that you have when we get to that agenda item as well. But I did want to thank you for taking so much time to meet with me. And I know you've met with other board members as well. One of the things that we've talked a lot about is how important it is that that we don't silo ourselves and that we're all working together, whether it's BTA or CSEA, which is our classified union, or BASA, which is our union for management, or anybody, you name it, that we that we work together and we build strong relationships. So it was really great to sit with you and just talk about areas of concern and and areas of growth. And I know that that's just going to continue. So I'm grateful to you for really wanting to forge that partnership with us. I think that is it. Thank you to, again, thank you to everybody for coming, and I look forward to future conversations.
Thank you, Dr. Weisberg. Thank you to everybody who came down tonight. It's kind of fun at times to manage the personal side at times of what it is to be predetermined. You put forward a vision, and people respond. That's our system. And we get that feedback. We welcome that feedback. And to those of you tonight, Autumn, your wife as well, who talked about very specific issues, others who have offered it in previous meetings, I've really appreciated that. Not only as a former resident who lived in the 91504 zip code, but as a kid who grew up there, who understands just how fast those cars are going. I think the speed around any school right now is horrifying to see. We are seeing, and by the way, a part of the payola that I, you know, am getting was working with traffic engineers in the city of Los Angeles and supporting the work of our transportation deputies. They got speed humps around schools in Los Angeles. There are models for public policy work that can be done. And I'm proud to be living every single day and succeeding every single day with the education that I received in Burbank Unified. That is the last formal piece of education that I've received. I am not ashamed of that. I am living proof of what is possible with an education from this school district. And I feel very blessed for the investment this community made in me as a student, which is why I take it so seriously, even though somebody can look up my my compensation, right? They can make that the issue. It's not about me. And that property, we should have a plan. We should responsibly have a plan for what's going to happen with that property. And I don't disagree with a single neighborhood that says, we want to be a part of that planning. You bet. We've got to get the parameters for what's possible first. Okay? And that's what I believe is this initial step. Then there will be listening. Then there will be the focus of, okay, this is what can be done. Clearly, right? This is not suitable. This is not a suitable use. Okay. What is suitable? What is not suitable is to say, well, it's not the 91504's problem. It should be the 91505's problem. We have to raise all boats here as a community, right? Because we're not representing just corners of our community. We're representing our community as a whole, a need as a whole. So what can the 91504 take on, I think, is the reasonable question that should be able to be asked safely without it becoming the politics of personal assassination. Now, if that's not what the climate allows, if that's not what's fun, because people fear this guy, wow, we're off base. That is a wonderful piece of property that has served generations of school students that I have come to connect with by knocking on their doors. And that institution should serve future generations of Burbank students. What that looks like? Absolutely. Can we envision that together? You bet. We should. We should. We've seen, right, the rhetoric evolve from, it's 130 units of housing. That's gone now, right? Now it's nothing at all. To those who are reasonable, to those who are going, okay, let's work with it. Let's figure it out. I am there, right? I don't want to create any more traffic nightmares out there. I have been on Scott Road. I have been on Kenneth. I know why stop signs are every block, because the speeding is exhausting. I can't imagine what it is to have a toddler, right? A little one that not conscious, not aware of what's out there, who could potentially run into some of these streets. I can't even imagine. No, I'm not a parent either. But I have, as I've always said since I've been here, I don't have kids of my own. I have 15,000 kids. And I fight every day, and I think every day, with them in mind. That's my life. That's the life I've chosen. So, and it is one of public service. And yes, it also means that I get to be beat up. It also means that if you want to make a difference, you got to be willing to put up with this. And I am. Because I think our kids are worth a conversation about innovation. Can we try this? Because here's the thing I will say, I am also getting emails of support, saying, we want housing for our teachers. We want affordable places for our custodians, the folks that we are having a hard time attracting. How do I get involved in that? How do I get involved in that conversation, too? I don't think that one zip code, one corner, one of this community should have to bear the full burden of that of that pursuit. In fact, quite the opposite. I think we're all going to have to figure out where we can make do. And the district does have limited property. It was illustrated tonight, there's a property across from Burrows, right? R1 Housing as well, right? Not a very different scenario, but the suggestion was just make it their problem. We have to work together. We have, it doesn't matter, across the zip codes, to answer the needs of this district, to provide for the future opportunities of future generations, so that somebody can graduate from this school district, and yes, sit in this center chair as president of the Board of Education and say, I still have a voice, and it still matters. Because just as that First Amendment protects your right to say what you want to say, it also protects my right to serve. And I'm going to continue serving, at least for the duration of this term, till I have to go out and get a public mandate again. I've gotten that mandate twice. Not because I have kids, not because I'm a teacher, but because I put kids first, and I ask for that judgment, I ask for that support from this community, and this community has given it to me twice. So to those of you who would see me in this moment, and especially within the context of the greater news of this moment, of LGBT folks being targeted, right? I'm a human being. None of you have brought up that narrative tonight, but in the broader context, that's real. I'm a human being. I care about our kids. I care about our communities. I care about future opportunities for them. We may disagree on whether or not Horus Man should just be preserved in its current state, or that there should be a vision for it. But then let's have that convo. I'm happy to have that. I'm really genuinely there. And if we can come up in this conversation with a middle ground that supports the neighborhood, which is clearly complaining about cut-through traffic, it's clearly complaining about the number of kind of out-of-control cars coming downhill, let's do that. But we haven't been there. That hasn't been the conversation. It's cut everything. And cut even the assessment so that we can even envision. We can't pass a bond every two years. We've got a plan for decades, often, ahead of us. So to say, we're not going to touch this for decades, let's consider a plan that considers the neighborhood and considers the needs of our kids. And again, I want to remember, I want to rewind the tape before we say, we're just building housing for the sake of housing. The concept is to build it so that we can guarantee universal childcare access in this city for pre-K through 5, making a Burbank education advantage for a lifetime. That's a possibility. That could be a possibility that we explore. So this neighborhood is not against innovation. I've known this neighborhood, and people who live there quite literally built this community in many regards, longtime residents, multi-generational families. My respect for that neighborhood is immense. So if you believe in that, if you don't believe, just the dog whistles, which seek to demonize, right, that Ferguson's the enemy, Weisberg's the enemy, that's when her name is, you know, actually pronounced correctly, right? They want to make this about us, so they don't make it about the ideas. We can build a consensus idea. We can. I think most reasonable people want to get there. What does the future of that site look like? Does that site need to get redesigned? To be more beneficial for your community, to slow down? That's a possibility. We should get that on the table. That shouldn't be off the table. So I think we all want to work together as neighbors. We all see each other in the grocery store. Trust me, I get the good, bad, and the ugly every time, every time. CVS, you look, you know, terrible at 11 o'clock at night. And somebody shows up and they say, hey, let me tell you about my kid. You know what I don't care about in that moment? How terrible I look. Or the fact that I'm sick. I get one shot with that kid, right? I get one opportunity to be a part of the educational experience of that young person. And you bet I'm going to show up for that kid every single time. So to those of you who are willing to connect, communicate, you bet, email me. Annie, it's great you've met with Dr. Weisberg. I would love an invitation, or I would love to extend an invitation to sit down and talk. I'm not sure you and I agree on the absolutes of no development. I don't think we're there. But I would like to know what your biggest concerns are. I've heard some of them here. Fantastic. You can hear some of my perspective, and then maybe we can get back and forth and keep working towards this. If you're open to it, fantastic. I'm extending that opportunity. And I've sat down with Mr. Schlossman, who was kind enough to invite me to his home. So, and you see how much we love each other here. So, and I will say he's laughing. So I'm not a boogeyman. None of us are. We all care. We all get there different ways. Let's be human. Let's show the world that the rest of this crap is just crap, and model for our kids a path forward that shows real leadership, not just for me, from neighborhoods. That's what's made this city great. So, thank you all for attending. The good news, you know, public comment is shifting. I don't think that it's, when we're making decisions at 10:30, 11 o'clock at night, the community is not participating in the same way. And the board, who works other jobs, because we do make what, $468 a month plus healthcare, thank you, Tip, and everybody else who makes that possible. We work full-time jobs, then we come here. So we need, and we are expected to make those decisions with clear heads, clear minds, all the things. And that's after reading a 500, usually between 300 to 500-page board packet, which I know most of us rarely work on, to get through and ask questions and chew on. So it's an honor to serve, but it's also just realistic that we want to get those agenda items done. And then we absolutely want to present opportunity for the public to weigh in on all the other items, so we can get them on future agendas, so we can talk about them then. So that is our core motivation. It is a privilege to serve all of you, whether we agree or disagree. And we're going to continue to do that for the rest of this meeting. So with that, I'm going to introduce Dr. Pramo, who has his special guest, who is right.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to introduce our Assistant Superintendent of Instruction, and she will be introducing our new Director of Special Education.
So happy to be here. So, good evening, President Ferguson, and members of the board and the Burbank community. This is really, really a great, great situation that we have because we have a wonderful new person that I want to introduce you to, who is our new Director of Special Education and Psychological Services, Ms. Jennifer Nicholson. I'm going to tell you a little bit about her background and preparation, and then I'm going to tell you a few personal comments about her, too. So she's been in education for 17 years. She has a deep and broad background. She has a master's in counseling with the marriage and family therapy option. And she has a service credential from CSUN in psychology, School Psychology. She's worked for Antelope Valley and for Santa Clarita, where she's been program specialist and psychologist, and she's also been a compliance officer. And for us, she started in 2016 as a school psychologist. Most recently, she's been a coordinator in our department. And this last year, she has really put in so much effort keeping our department together, as we haven't had a director, and she's just been phenomenal. So that's her background. But what I want you to know about her is that she is, she's just a wonderful person. She cares about kids and families, and she cares about staff. And she doesn't think that those things are mutually exclusive. So she's always trying to work, you know, to make everybody happy. And to that end, the only complaint I have so far is I need her to go home. You know, it's like, please, you know, don't burn out. We need you. We love you. You're doing great. And this is Jennifer Nicholson.
It's such a pleasure to meet all of you. I'm really excited to be in this role and to, I look forward to making a difference in our students' lives. I'm so passionate about my position about education, about students, families, and everybody who I work with. So thank you so much for this opportunity.
Comments from board colleagues?
Go ahead.
Just a big welcome. I'm looking forward to sitting down and learning about all of the amazing things that you're doing. It's a tough role, and such a vital role to our district in so many ways. So just know that you have the board here to support you in any way that we might be able to. And I hope you'll reach out to us if there are ways that we can do that. And just looking forward to hearing more from you as the as the school year starts. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Any other? Dr. Agger Conian.
I'm just going to echo what my colleague said. Welcome. And again, you can always reach out to us. We're a little family here. We always tell people, you know, you can get ahold of us anytime you want. And I'm very happy that you're here. Please do go home early.
Just on time.
Well, I'm sorry. Did I say early? I'm sorry. Hey, that's what I told my workers today. Go home early today. So, but, but please, we want to make sure that, you know, and I say this in the most sincere way, because this is a challenge we're having in our workplace now. There's a lot of, you know, a lot happening after COVID, a lot of people. So, but I'm happy that you're here and you work hard, and we're here to support you in any way we can. So congratulations on your promotion, and I'm looking forward to working with you.
Likewise. Thank you.
Thank you. She can go home early once in a while.
So that's why we are not in charge of directing staff. We're in charge of directing a superintendent. Yes, yes, absolutely. We had the chance to briefly interact while waiting in the valet line at the Castaways for the AXA conference. So that was an ironic place to kind of connect. We, you know, we were honoring Ms. Cuseo and her, you know, all that is Ms. Cuseo, and her professionalism, and her talent, and her career in Burbank Unified, and as an administrator. But I got the chance to briefly meet you during dinner and then while we waited. And it was a brief conversation, but let me just tell you, it was very clear where your values lie, you know. And it's so critical that we have good values, right, that are driving decisions right now. You know, everything else is trainable, the values, right, we've got to hire. And that's what we've really got to seek out in the world. Burbank Unified Education taught me that. So what I will say is, you preside over a department that cares for population of our students that is coming out a period of time where they may have been disproportionately impacted by this pandemic. It's been something that certainly, as a board member, I've been hammering a little bit. And because I don't think that the education system as a whole, right, was as compassionate as it could have been in that moment, despite the very best efforts of a lot of professionals working around the clock. Some of that's limitations. Who knew we would have to shut down, right? Who knew? All the things. But those kiddos, right, they need us. They need leadership. And so we have asked for presentations as a board. This is not to grill you either. So please know- Uh, this is not to grill you either, so please know there's no bottom line here, there's no question. But we have asked for presentations as a board, um, to come forward. Um, and and in a time, uh, that is appropriate for you, um, that respects the work that you have to do to get us up and off the ground this year, um, we would like to have you. Uh, and and to really kind of understand better the nature of what those impacts really look like for our sped populations a few years out now, um, and and where we can continue to address those needs. Many parents I connected with, really hard connections, right? You did, too, right? They're really concerned about where they're at right now, you know, and panicked, right? Not not managing it well, right? So for for many of us who've been able to move on, they haven't. And I'm not sure we can get everybody peace, but if we can pursue that, I'd love to. I know you're a partner in that, um, from our interactions. And the other thing is, I just haven't heard or seen you, uh, and and I and that's not a bad thing. I I think you've gotten right to work. Um, so I'm grateful for that leadership where I can be supportive and I know where we can be supportive. Um, let's collaborate, communicate, and and whatever we can do, uh, full speed ahead because, uh, these kiddos need it. So good luck in your service, and we're very lucky to have you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're new talent coming in. We're doing, um, i- it's it's really fantastic to see, um, it was brought up in public comment. You know, there was a lot of leadership we've lost, and that leadership needs to be celebrated because it got us to this moment. It got us past a pandemic. Um, and I will, you know, as I reflect on my time of service, I will always be grateful for the admin, the administrators, each of you, uh, who don't go home. Um, all of you don't go home. I'm driving by the drop, so I'm like, why is that light on, right? Half of it's because I'm worried about the electric bill, you know? But we all do that in weird ways, you know? And and so, uh, Ms. Tabit's really good at pointing out like, I don't know why those sprinklers were on, right? And and it's really this like, this personal effort, and you realize it's only perfected, yeah, that sponsor cam card, she gets it. But that's every district employee for the most part, you know? It's really 90% of us, and we're all going, what's going on there? And I called, you know, Connie Tremble, and she's going to handle it, right? Everybody just points. Well, not anymore, but yes, you know? So, um, this is, as we about, as we are about to hit the school season again, for all the things seen and unseen, I always say that, but it's true. Um, thank you. Breathe now. Uh, chaos is coming in the best way, you know? The work is coming. Uh, and to all of our new administrators who are taking this on for the first time, uh, we believe in you. This community needs you, and these kids more than ever deserve you. Um, so throw down, uh, they're worth it. So thank you, guys. With that, we will go to, uh, new and our, uh, item number nine, new and or unfinished business. Item 9A, uh, which is the approval of fiscal crisis and management assistant. This is fabulous to compete with. Uh, the approval of the fiscal crisis and management assistant team, FICMAT study agreement. Uh, and for this, I'll ask, uh, Mr. Cantwell, Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services, uh, to, uh, address the board.
Good evening, Board President Ferguson, Vice President Weisberg, board members and colleagues. On June 15th, we, uh, last time we met together, uh, in this room, discussed a series of errors, both accounting and budgetary, um, that led to us identifying an ending fund balance to close out the 2223 fiscal year in a better financial position than we anticipated. Um, and so I do want to emphasize that headline, which is that while they were errors, um, we are actually in a better financial position than we were anticipating through most of the fiscal year in 2223. But as a result of that, we have reached out to the number one organization in the state that really helps districts when, um, they have these types of challenges, um, and that's FICMAT, the Financial Crisis and Management Assistance Team, um, and are seeking their support to come in and help analyze, uh, all variety of practices and, uh, procedures in our business office. They understand that they are coming in as a direct result of these actions, uh, and and issues, again, that were reported to you last month. Uh, but more importantly, it's not just to focus on those, but it's going to be focusing more broadly, and how do we really make sure that our department, um, in 2023 is utilizing the most efficient and effective processes, moving away from some of our very, uh, manual practices, very, uh, labor-intensive practices to reduce the the possibility of errors and increase, like I said, efficiency and accuracy. So they're gonna, uh, if you approve this, will help provide us, um, both insight into the specific issues that led to us, uh, reaching out to them, but also into how we really optimize the the department's operations. Uh, this is only one of multiple steps. We also will be bringing to you a contract, uh, in our next board meeting, um, to seek support in, uh, helping build out some of our purchasing teams, competencies, and and skill sets. And so again, what we, I don't want this to be viewed as a single, um, uh, response item, but rather, uh, as just one among multiple that'll be coming to you to help, uh, build out and, uh, support our fiscal department.
Questions from my colleagues. Dr. Weisberg.
Wow. Um, do we have a estimated time when this is going to be completed? And will there be sort of semi-regular updates that you can provide about initial findings as we move towards the sort of final report?
Um, yeah, so they have not given us a, um, a timeline for, um, completion. They initially gave me one, and then when I spoke to them most recently, they were saying that unfortunately, we have more districts in fiscal crisis, um, than has been the past few years. And so, um, as a result of budget adoptions, they have, I think it was either eight or 12 districts that immediately rose to the top of their their priority list that require... So FICMAT has two arms. One is actually mandated by statute that goes in and supports districts that are in, um, are in uncertain times whether they can meet their financial obligations. And so those districts must take priority for them. The separate arm is what we're bringing them in under, which is the consulting support. Um, and so, uh, because of that, the latest information they gave me was they said they would hope that they could be on site September-ish and that a final report be more December-ish. And so, uh, i- if the board approves this, I will follow up with FICMAT tomorrow, and hopefully we can start cementing out those timelines. But unfortunately, in the past two weeks, things did did change prematurely.
Sponsor Cam Carr.
Thank you, President Ferguson. Um, can you just talk a little bit about, um, I know that, uh, President Ferguson and I are kind of set aside to to help with this, um, but just kind of what some of the roles and responsibilities are between, as you say it, between kind of like board members and staff and FICMAT and kind of what what you're expecting in terms of, um, you know, as as Dr. Weisberg said, kind of regular reporting or kind of what we what we should be kind of expecting?
Yeah. Yeah, so the team, um, the FICMAT team will reach out and ask for a lot of information from us. It is, uh, very intrusive and, uh, and, um, exactly as it should be. Um, so we will provide that information to them. They will come on site and actually then do further, um, uh, testing of processes and procedures, as well as meet and do interviews. Certainly, the two of you will, uh, we would like to and expect to be part of that interview process. One of the reasons that we are using FICMAT or that we're recommending FICMAT is that, um, again, they are, they were created by statute, um, and everything they do is public. Um, and so there is no ability for the board nor for any staff member to actually suppress or direct their work. Um, they, uh, kind of, if we, if if you approve this contract, we are unleashing them to to do their, to do their work and to help give, uh, public transparency and awareness to, uh, to all that has taken place and can be improved in that department. So, um, we will provide updates as they give them to us. Um, you guys will certainly be, again, working hand in hand with them as well. Um, but the, again, what really differentiates FICMAT from other groups is, um, is that the the board and staff don't have the ability to, uh, to direct their work to, uh, to significantly and has, uh, no ability to actually, again, restrict the the public nature of the report. So that's, I hear very clearly from the board, that was a priority.
Uh, you're welcome indeed. Dr. Arakane.
Thank you. So, uh, my question is, uh, going right now to an audit at my place. Um, so are these CPAs who come as, um, and who act as auditors and then give us findings at the end with improvements or just give us findings, period?
It's a great question, so I do want to differentiate. These are not auditors. So we are still, uh, conducting our annual audit with, uh, with the CPA firm that we utilize. And again, because these errors happen in this fiscal year, they will be analyzing these things very intentionally and specifically as part of the audit. Um, and the fact that they weren't reported, uh, during our last audit season, again, was not a failing of theirs. It was that these these things took place this fiscal year. And so, um, uh, they will be doing that. The the FICMAT team will be made up of, um, practitioners. So a lot of times, there'll be county assistant superintendent of business or or their staff. Um, there'll be directly, uh, practitioners who are with FICMAT. So it's, it's more of the, uh, the people who, um, are on the, um, current school or former school district experience, the ones who really know where where things are.
And then at the end, I've never seen one of these reports before. Is it just findings or is it findings with solutions?
Findings with solutions. So they will also provide us recommendations, and then they also, um, as a free service, will do a follow-up, um, within 12 months if we want them to come back in and look at how well we implemented some of their solutions. So so it is not simply about here are issues, that they also say here are best practices, here are tools to improve.
So, any, I'm sorry. Okay. Um, thank you. You're absolutely right. Uh, we, uh, at least in in our pursuit of this particular contractor, right, we went for the most vicious, right? And and we're not, we're not apologizing for that, right? We lost, um, Lord knows there was a a moment of where the board lost confidence, right, in what we could count on in terms of real numbers. So I, again, I want to bring that back into full context. You know, it is, uh, comedic in nature to compare this to a dog off a leash, but heck, let me just tell you, when there are dollars missing for our kids, um, I will compare it to whatever, um, including opening the gates of hell to go get those dollars for our kids. Um, I don't care about our comfort. I don't care because we are, at the end of the day, accountable to 100,000-plus residents who we owe better service than this. So we are getting the dollars and cents, we are getting the systemic problems, and we are delivering that report card as embarrassing as it's already embarrassing, right? Again, just being forthright to sit here, right, and to have to present this to the community, oops. It's embarrassing, and it's going to get more embarrassing before it gets improved. What I will say, um, is in this process, um, each board member, in their own way, has been working to provide their feedback on what really they're concerned about. What about this? What about this? Sometimes it's systems, sometimes it's employees, sometimes, um, sometimes, right, it's just different approaches on how to identify more accountability. Every single board member has done that here. Um, I also want to say that staff has been working extremely hard as well, uh, those who feel very responsible. Um, and, uh, you know, I I think I have to be reflective of that, just to be honest to the public and say, I haven't gotten a no, right? I've gotten a, I'll look into it because there isn't. And I also want to thank our labor partners, who frankly haven't vilified us, who haven't, you know, made this harder than it already is because it's humiliating. So, um, one, Ms. Ponser Cam Carr, uh, has her background in in educational finance as well, uh, that she brings to this. Uh, as President of the Board, who has been a part of different decision-making processes, that pairing, I thought, was appropriate, and and colleagues agreed, so I thank my colleagues for that. But, um, it is, I think, my intention, as long as, uh, my term, uh, continues, to certainly continue to bring this back for different moments of sunlight. We owe the public that, uh, at a minimum. We owe our kids that at a minimum. So, um, FICMAT has its own website, right? Uh, this was a part of what you said, uh, that discloses the public reports. It is my hope that we reach out to the city and ask them to display the reports, right? I want it everywhere. Uh, and if there are not, frankly, the explainer documents that, um, help people understand what this is, uh, that we certainly either figure out how to independently create those kind of forms, uh, so that the public can really help and work on this. So Ms. Ponser Cam Carr and I will be working on this, bringing this back, different recommendations. Uh, we're very limited in what we can tell FICMAT, but that doesn't mean, uh, we are limited in how we make sure this gets out to the public so we can restore confidence. Uh, Mr. Cantwell, thank you for your work in this. Um, you know, without a doubt, uh, you have been in the trenches trying to seek answers and opportunities, and it's a hard position to be in. So I appreciate your leadership in this moment, uh, as we really try to figure out what happened.
One quick question, and I hope for people listening, you take time to look through the contract because it's really helpful in regards to the process, but on the project schedule, it talks about, um, it breaks down orientation, blah, 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 blah. But it also says, second to last, um, board presentation to be determined if requested. Is it possible to just say, we request it right now?
Sure.
Um, and I also, you know, it'll be interesting to have a further conversation about that optional support that they offer. I don't know if it's like, I think it's like six months or eight months after. That could also be something really positive, um, just again, to show the community that we're that we're doing due diligence. So if we could tell them that we definitely want that board report, I think that would be great.
I'll communicate that.
Thank you.
Ms. Ponser Cam Carr.
Thank you, President Ferguson. Um, I look forward to doing this work with you. Um, and I think you're you're right. Embarrassing is the right word. Um, and I think I certainly felt that with you, um, and I think, Mr. Cantwell, you felt that as well. None has felt good about what got us here. Um, I am reminded of one of my favorite quotes by my, Dr. Maya Angelou, that do the best you can until you know better, and when you know better, you do better, right? So we're a learning organization. We are not our worst day. I, um, I believe in in you and your team and your ability to kind of take what comes back from FICMAT in a way that is not defensive and moves that work forward in a way that makes us better. Um, and I think that that's how I'm going to be looking at the report that they give us, is these are all opportunities for us to get better. Because I don't think any of us want to be in the position that we've been in, um, and the only way we do that is by really just opening up the the hood and and letting them just take us down on it, right? And so, um, I appreciate your work on this. I know it's, it, you know, nobody thinks of accounting as necessarily particularly like emotionally laden work, but I will tell you, like, the month of June was hard emotionally for me, thinking about like, well, how could we have done this differently? How could we have known anything differently and feeling like we let down our community?
Yeah.
Um, and so I just want to recognize that, like, this is the right next step, and I want us to approach it from the point of view of growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Arakane. Uh, we could, any other comments on this? Make a motion. Um, Dr. Arakane, go ahead.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approves this study agreement between Burbank Unified School District and Fiscal Crisis and Management Assistance Team, effective July 21, 23 through June 30, 24, not to exceed 19,700, respectively, and the authority assigned agreement be exercised pursuant to BUSD AR3314 as presented.
Second. Moved by Dr. Arakane and seconded by Ms. Tabit, uh, to move forward, uh, with this contract agreement. Before there are any comments, I will ask, um, you know, Ms. Tabit, at some point, uh, or at many points, was talking about school services, uh, as a potential vendor to do some of this work. Um, I want to honor those requests as well. And so if there's stuff, basically based off of the contract we've received that is outside the scope of work that school services may offer, I'd like that to be reviewed, uh, with you and staff potentially, um, if that's appropriate, uh, with, and then potentially brought here, if that works for you. Okay. Um, just noting that there are limits to what FICMAT, and there was, uh, in your email exchange with FICMAT where we attempted to say, hey, can we go broader? What did, and FICMAT basically responded, nope. Okay. So, um, that is a publicly available email that everybody can Freedom of Information Act request today. Uh, so, um, anyway, while we are at it, that's the one to read. I think it's fantastic. Uh, no. So with that, uh, we will go, uh, to a vote on this. Uh, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? That motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Uh, we will move to item 9B, which is the, um, ratification of the agreement with the Burbank Community YMCA for childcare services. It's a continuation of an agreement that, uh, we entered into last year, uh, to handle our supplemental childcare needs as we, uh, closed down, unfortunately, programs, uh, due to the financial and the state regulatory, uh, frameworks that were required and the costs, uh, to sustain those. and the costs to sustain those. So with that, we'll get a motion?
Mr. President?
Ms. Tabit.
I move that the Board of Education ratify the agreement between the Burbank Unified School District and Burbank Community YMCA to provide childcare services not to exceed 75,000 from the general fund, effective July 1, 2023, through August 31, 2024, and that authority to sign this agreement be exercised pursuant to BUSD AR 3314 as presented.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Tabit, seconded by Dr. Aga Khanian, to move forward with this ratification. Any further questions on this? This is a ratification. So Dr. Pramo, if you could offer why this is a ratification?
Yes, it's because we needed to maintain and keep services going and keep our contract going.
Excellent. So for members of the public at home, ratification is mainly basically the district moved ahead with this and now is coming to the board after the fact for approval. This is done sometimes and mostly in consultation, or understanding kind of the routine nature of this. So but we still ask, because the district moved forward unilaterally. So it's not in every situation the district can do this. But I do highlight this every now and then, so that way we are educating the public on these items. So with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion carries five zero. Onto item 9C, the ratification of a four-step salary schedule for certificated assistant superintendent salary, or for assistant superintendents' salary schedule D, and four-step salary schedule for classified assistant superintendents' salary schedule E. So can I get a motion on that front? Dr. Aga Khanian, yes?
I move that the Board of Education ratified a four-step salary schedule for certified assistant superintendent, and four-step salary schedule for classified assistant superintendent, effective July 1, 2023, as presented.
As amended. There is an amendment on the desk on that?
As amended.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Dr. Aga Khanian, seconded by Dr. Weisberg. So I'll ask Dr. Pramo to present on this, as well as the details surrounding the amendment that's on the desk as well.
Yes, thank you very much. So the report before you today is to ask for your consideration in placing our assistant superintendents on a four-step pay scale. This is in alignment with teachers and teacher salaries that have progressive steps, in addition to most of our employees who have that ability. Part of the impetus for this request is that we have some very key openings at district office and district leadership. One of them is the position of Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources that was vacated by Dr. Sarah Neiman. And we also have a looming retirement for our Assistant Superintendent of Instruction with Ms. Sharon Cassejo. And and these are very key positions. And we need to attract talented individuals who have experience. And we did the due diligence of looking at comps in the local area. And assistant superintendents are being compensated up to $250,000, $260,000. Now, we don't have the ability to do that. But what this salary step scale does is to be more competitive. And it would allow for an assistant superintendent to earn up to $225,000, which we know will attract candidates that are not just qualified, but highly qualified. I really believe that we are in a position of vulnerability in that we have multiple positions at the district that are either being occupied currently with existing people, but it's new to them, new jobs. And we also have positions, several positions that are open where we really do need qualified and experienced people. And I think that this is going to allow us to be able to accomplish that and to hire the right people. And as far as the amendment, I just initially, this was going to come to the board as a five-step scale. And the reason why it didn't is because with the compensation, the raise in compensation, it turned out to be more sensible to have it a four-step scale. And it's being presented as both certificated and classified, because some of our assistant superintendents are certificated and some of them are not.
Dr. Weisberg.
Thank you. I just have some clarifying questions. So I'm pretty sure I understand. I just want to make sure I understand.
Sure.
So the first thing is, if anyone has read the front page, the very first page of the report, I think it's really clear that this was done because we do not compensate our assistant superintendents at the level that surrounding districts do. We're very, very low. And so we were trying to bring it up as much as we possibly could. And we did that by looking at comparable districts and adjusting that way. Yes?
Correct.
Okay. Second question is, is it correct to think about this similarly to how we think about teachers as far as like, step up on scales? So what it isn't is like, we're giving everybody a raise, as much as we're adjusting the scale to meet people's advanced degrees, to represent their years of service. So it's it's really more of like a step up, the way that we think about teachers, than it is like, everybody gets?
That's correct.
Okay. I think that's really important for people to sort of think about. I won't go into the long speech about how each one of you does the job of eight people at other districts. I can save that for another time. The other question I had is, have before this was finalized and brought to the board for approval, was there any kind of conversation with our other union partners to make sure that they felt like this was fair and represented the same kind of, you know, compensatory focus that we put on them and on CSC and BTA particularly?
Yeah, I'm really glad that you asked that question. I think that we're in a moment where transparency across the board is going to be really critical, for a lot of reasons, many of which we talked about in the previous agenda item. So absolutely. I met with CSCA representatives, BTA representatives, and boss of representatives, to make sure that everybody was on the same page and understood what we were trying to achieve, what the rationale was, and to be able to address any concerns or questions that they might have.
That's fantastic. And I think that that should become standard practice, right?
I totally agree.
Whenever we do something like this, we're always reaching out to our union partners to make sure that everybody has their question. And so that that, to me, was kind of the biggie. So I really appreciate that. I think those are my, I think that's what, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Further questions?
Yeah, sorry. Thank you, President Ferguson. So Dr. Pramo, I think during the last closed session, you also presented to us some data. Oh, yeah, I thought so.
Any closed session item?
Right. Right, right, right.
That's all.
I just, I feel like at some point, we saw some data around what people in other districts were making.
That's correct. So the state identifies similar schools.
Okay.
So we can look to see what the state has identified as a similar school district to Burbank Unified School District.
Right.
And those are the ones that we targeted and looked at.
Got it. Thank you. I think that just might be, you know, in the future, kind of helpful context for this kind of stuff.
Oh, okay.
As we're thinking about making ourselves competitive from a compensation perspective, because that was certainly helpful for me, right? Because I think it's it's more like the high level superintendent salary, I think, is a conversation that happens a lot, generally, not just here, right? But it's on the front page of the other times. Any state you go to, they are talking about superintendent compensation, but they're not necessarily getting to the level of assistance soup. And I, for me, that data was really clarifying in terms of seeing kind of where we where we sit, especially as we had a number of openings to fill. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. So Exec has, the executive committee, which is made up of the board president, board vice president, has, you know, heard this feedback. Additionally, yes, we have received reports and kind of, again, information that says this is the state of where things are as it relates to compensation. One, we wanted to make sure bargaining units were made whole first. So that was done. We negotiated our contracts. Then the accounting error occurred. We realized there was more to negotiate. We went back, worked with negotiating partners again, came to agreements. There's still areas to work. That's not done. But we were accountable in trying to get that money to members as soon as possible. And then we brought administrators and salaries, the salaries of administrators, assistant superintendents, and district leadership here. So also, when I see tweets online that say, why was this done in the middle of the summer? It's because that's when it got done. Not because we're trying to hide something. In fact, we have pushed these items in order to make sure that we are double, triple checking with members of the public, because this, you know, of course, we don't want to be that headline. We're not the Beverly Hills of anything in this school district. And we owe it to this community to say that. The other thing is, is that we're trying to track and move people up, just like everybody in other industries and other parts of our district. So I do want to compliment Dr. Pramo in the sense that this board asked, you know, hey, we're seeing a lot of different administrators leave. We're seeing the departures. What's the plan to fix it, to stem the tide? And he showed up. He showed up with a plan. And I appreciate that. And I know board colleagues do as well. And and these are the challenges we're facing. And just thank you for this approach. I think there's going to be, the approach, as you said, is multifaceted, but it is transparent. So as Ms. Ponsor Camkar pointed out, I would like to see that comparison study put on the website, because, again, we didn't do it as part of this disclosure. So we should put it front and center. And and put our salary scale to match, and why we answered for that in the way that we did here. With that, to all of our assistant supes, yes, as Dr. Weisberg said, she won't say it, I will. You do the work of eight people. And we are going to review and understand and try and rebuild where we can, based off of the funding structures that exist, to try and meet the demands that this district presents. But the leadership has been huge. And and we thank you for that. And and we will continue to do our best to try and keep up. And so thank you. With that, I'll take a motion.
I will, since I can look at, oh, he did make a
Oh, sorry.
And I seconded it.
Great. That's me being off, then. With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero.
It was really nice to see that.
We match pitch, everybody. We match pitch on that. Thank you, choirs. Okay, item 9D, ratification of employment contract for the Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Services. Let's get a motion on that, and then we'll go to Dr. Pramo.
President Ferguson.
Dr. Weisberg.
I move that we approve the ratification of employment contract for Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Services, effective July 1, 2023. Was that an amended or presented?
Amended.
As amended.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Weisberg, seconded by Dr. Aga Khanian, to approve as amended. If you can go over the amended total, Dr. Pramo, or the reason, sorry, excuse me.
Sure, absolutely. So this is, with the approval of the four-step salary schedule, what that places us in is a position to align our current assistant superintendents within that scale. So Ms. Sharon Cassejo has been an assistant superintendent for five years now. And if we place her on that scale, she would be on the last step. So I will, I would say that I wish there could be 50 steps and I could place her at step 50. But we have a YouTube, but it's a four-step scale. And I, she's, that's where she legitimately needs to be placed. It's a ratification, because this would go back to July 1 of this month. And it's amended because we needed to adjust the vacation days, because it was misrepresented initially on the original draft. And so we needed to go back and fix that. So it was the same as it was before. It was just, it was just put incorrectly.
Okay.
Okay. So the amendment is related to a clerical error. Having said that, thank you, Ms. Cassejo. And and we did get a check in from the superintendent on the acting superintendent on this, prior to moving forward with that. So that I do want to acknowledge for members of the public, is there was a check in. It wasn't unilaterally decided. So at least the leadership of the board was consulted before moving forward. And the broader board had been polled generally, as we negotiated contracts. So with that, we will go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. We will move to item 9E, ratification of employee contract for Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
Mr. President.
Dr. Weisberg.
I move that we ratify the employee contract for the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, effective July 17, 2023, as, is it amended? Or I don't, as amended.
They're all amended.
They're all amended.
Okay. Moved by Dr. Weisberg, seconded by Dr. Aga Khanian.
Yes, sir. I'm asking the board to approve a new Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. It's a ratification, because our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources started working for us on Monday. We desperately needed the help with multiple vacancies in teaching positions. And she graciously accepted that and was willing to do that. That's the reason why it's a ratification. It's an amendment because of the fact that we had originally anticipated a five-step scale.
Got it.
And then it turned into a four-step scale. And so there was an adjustment there. And I'm ready to answer any questions if you have.
Okay. Any questions on this?
I don't
No. So we will, yes. So the question was from Ms. Ponsor Camkar, did we ever introduce? So we have been intentionally throttling the introduction of staff in order to keep, just like we're, you know, changing up how we're approaching public comment, we are trying to get the issues before the public, so everybody can get home, enjoy time with their families, et cetera. So we are going to be bringing kind of batches of staff as we come through. So that way, the meeting doesn't just become about that. It really is truly maintaining the business as a central focus as we deliver for kids. But yes, coming to a meeting near you.
And thank you for asking that, because I thought, did I miss something?
Yeah.
I was like, I've been to all the meetings.
Yeah, it's okay.
Welcome.
We'll get there, folks. So, you know, you'll also notice, all these contracts are happening on the same night. That is also intentional. We want to be very transparent. They are all here, one meeting, one stop. We're not separating a ton of different contracts and a ton of different meetings. So we are, we are focused on on moving through this as systemically as we can at this time. And we appreciate everybody in this moment. So with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. We will go to item 9F. Dr. Aga Khanian.
I move that Board of Education approves the employment contract with Dr. Peter Knappich as interim Assistant Superintendent of Education Services, effective July 21, 23, and when, number one, the effective date begins, for the new Assistant Superintendent of Education Services, who is hired, or two, John Pramo, Dr. John Pramo, resumes his position as Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Aga Khanian, seconded by Dr. Weisberg. And E, Dr. Pramo, if you could present, I'm asking you to present on each of these. So preview.
No, no worries.
There you go.
So the request for consideration is to have Dr. Peter Knappich be the interim Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. I know that I don't need to say this, but I am. He is a proven district leader, has been for a long time. He has a work ethic that is impeccable. And in order to maintain some consistency, and because of his leadership, I think he is the perfect choice to come in as interim Assistant Superintendent of Ed Services. It's interim because of the fact that my position is acting superintendent. And so until that, or if that becomes permanent, this needs to be as an interim contract. So the amendment portion has to do with the scale again, and the fact that it had initially been introduced as a five-step scale, and now it's a four-step scale.
Okay.
Yeah.
Questions on this? With that, we will move forward. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Dr. Knappich, for your continued service to our students.
Absolutely. And then, absolutely, Dr. Knappich, we see. So always back there, kind of tucked away, you know, right, you know. But but he also is very quick to deploy, to deal with issues, you know, and and always gets out there. So always great to see folks evolve in their roles and and do more for students. So item 9G, ratification of employee reclassifications, job descriptions, and certificated supervisors and managers' salary schedule A, classified supervisors and managers' salary schedule B, and confidential employees' salary schedule C.
Mr. President?
Ms. Tabit.
Why, thank you. And now we're on 9G, correct?
That's correct.
I move that the Board of Education ratify the employee reclassification, job descriptions, and certificated supervisors and managers' salary schedule A, classified supervisors and managers' salary schedule B, and confidential employees' salary schedule C, effective July 1, 2023, as presented.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Tabit, seconded by Dr. Aga Khanian. Dr. Pramo?
Yes, sir.
Also is amended.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And thank you for this opportunity to Ms. Nicole or Becky. I am going to do my best to answer all your questions. I want to begin by saying that this reclass process started early in the spring. this reclass process started early in the spring, and it is not unusual. It doesn't happen often for BASA members or administrators, but it has been done in the past, and it mirrors the process that is used, for example, with classified staff who regularly do reclass. And this was made available to our Burmec administrators. There were specific parameters on being able to apply. I'm just going to read, it's really short, I'm going to read it. In order to reclassify, you need to have significant changes to current job description, including strikeouts for duties not performed, and new duties bolded and underlined, responsibilities of the position that may have changed, and the name of the supervisor has directed the change of responsibilities, approximate period of time the duties began, and the percentage of the work day that these new duties entail. Proposed salary schedule adjustment, based on salary comparisons with BUSD, may include supporting data, including comparative data with other like positions in comparable or similar districts in Los Angeles County. So, based on those parameters, an administrator could apply for a reclass, and they were, those applications for consideration needed to be done by March 15th. So, I will share with you that I was not part of the BASA reclass, but what I can tell you is that a committee was formed to review all the applications. To the best of my knowledge, that committee consisted of former superintendent Dr. Matt Hill, Dr. Sarah Neiman, the BASA president, which is Ms. Laura Flossi, and then, one of our classified managers, and they represented BASA, and they reviewed each of the documents. Now, you asked questions about how compensation was determined, so I can't answer that specifically, because I wasn't in any of those conversations. What I can tell you is that part of the process is for them to submit a rationale for where they thought they should be placed, and that would be used to compare against what our current salary schedule is, so that the committee can see where the alignment fell, and whether or not that could be justified or not justified. And so, those decisions were made. Part of the commitment that was actually laid out in the process that was emailed to all administrators is that if they did receive, if they did get their reclassification granted, that it would be retro to July 1st. So, that was a, that was a commitment that was made at the beginning, right, and that's what we talked about in our negotiations team with BTA at the time, because we made, we were transparent that this was going to happen, and we kept them up to date on where we were with the process. So, that is where we are today. Now, I, I want to share with you that, again, this is what we've talked about several times today, is in our strong efforts to remain transparent, when we submitted this to the board, we included all the job descriptions that showed what the strikeouts were and what the additions were. That is going to be standard operating practice for us, because we think it's important that the public understand what these changes are, and that we are transparent about it. So, love to answer any questions.
This is something I asked of Mr., I'm sorry, you didn't even say I could go. Something I was talking to Mr. Cantwell about, something I'd like to request, moving forward, next time we are involved in reclass, is that we get a, the board gets a report, everybody does, about who ends up applying, who is granted reclass, who isn't, and, and the reasons behind it. I think that's going to be really helpful information to have, moving forward.
I absolutely agree.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Additional comments or questions on this? I do want to point out, this is a very emotional process for a lot of employees, who take on a lot of work. It's not always seen, it's not always, it doesn't always meet the criteria, frankly, that allows it to move forward and be reclass. And for many employees who don't see the additional work that society has kind of passed on, that, that education has passed on to them, this is deeply emotional. And there was a time, again, we disclosed this, where we moved this as an agenda item, and, and that, too, right, triggered for many, a very deeply emotional response. And so, one, I want to be accountable for that, because, one, we need to make sure we got our fiscal house, frankly, in order and on the right track, and that we were giving direction in a way that gave transparency to the public. Per usual, employees, their anxiety level raised, right, and paid for that in some level. So, to all of those who are, are going through this process, who will go through this process, who, who didn't make it, or whose positions weren't considered, you know, we take this seriously, we hear this, we value your work, and for those of you who waited in this moment, apologies, because I didn't mean to contribute to that, but this moment is important, that we make you whole. So, with that, we do have a motion. We'll move forward with about, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? That motion carries five zero. And thank you to those employees. Onto item nine H, approval of directives for coaching and athletic and activities camp stipends.
Mr. Ferguson, or President Ferguson, I move that the Board of Education approve the directives for coaching and athletic activities camp stipend as presented.
Second.
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll give that to, it'll be moved by former President Ms. Tabit, you know, so I'll give you that title. And then, to Vice President Weisberg, as well, not Weinberg. Any discussion on, this is a significant item, so I will, you know, and, and something that, well, let me be clear, all items on the board's agenda are authorizations, they're significant, but one that certainly needs highlighting, so Dr. Paramo, if you could give us some background.
Yes, absolutely. I think it's critical that we give some context to this. To begin, I want to be clear that what we're asking for is permission to move forward with some language around stipends and camps, so that we can get started with the school year with these in place. It is not, I'm not asking at this time to make it policy, and the reason is, is because we've never had language in this regard before, and because of that, there have been some disparate practices that we're trying to address. If we can try this out for the fall semester, I will be able to see whether or not the parameters we set are actually appropriate, or if they need to be tweaked. So, that would allow us to try that out. If we get it right, or if it needs to be tweaked, we'll do that work, and then we can bring that back as policy later. I want to be really specific about what this is trying to address. So, first of all, when it comes to athletic camps in the summer, I fully recognize that it's important for our athletic teams to be able to fundraise, and that's what these tend to be, is the opportunity to fundraise. I, no one wants to put any obstacle to that. However, it needs to be done appropriately. And what that means is that any camp, any summer camp, needs to have a use of facilities without exception, and that includes custodial. We can't, you can't forego custodial services in these camps. It's, it's required to keep and maintain our sites. When it comes to collecting money for these camps, it needs to be done appropriately. If you are a fundraising group that runs through ASB, then those funds need to go through the student store. That needs to be accountable, we need to have record of that, to protect ourselves, and to mitigate any kind of liability. If you are a 501(c)(3), I understand that, you operate differently, and that is absolutely fine, but the funds collected need to be placed into a, an account, a banking account, that is for the organization, as opposed to a personal banking account, which is not appropriate. So, we've never had language that stipulated that. It's never been in writing, and so, we need to have that in writing, so that we're all doing this the right way, and that we're not going to be called into question later. Second point is, when it comes to actual staffing for athletics, and what I want the public to know is that there is a negotiated list of stipends for our district that is in our contract. It lists every stipend, it lists the compensation for the stipend, and it lists the number of stipends. That is not in question, we're not changing that, that is solid, that is, there's no intention to change that. What this language attempts to do is address any additional coaches that an organization may want. I, I don't oppose that. If, if there is an athletic team that feels that they're going to be better served with additional coaches, and there's a fundraising mechanism to generate funds to make that happen, that's great. There's just two things that we're asking. We're asking that, if you're going to fundraise for additional coaches, that the stipend you offer them cannot exceed the amount of our district stipend. So, we're keeping things on par, and that they're equitable. And the other thing is, is that money needs to be donated to the district, and then, district needs to cut that check to the coach. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
So, it sounds like, really, the impetus for this is, I mean, we, the fact that we haven't had it is a little bananas. But, so, it's basically to make sure that we're doing things the right way, that there's policy and procedures in place, that the district is also protected legally, so is everybody else doing everything, and that also, in addition to that, it's also issues of equity, that we're making sure that everybody has the, that, that no one is making a bajillion dollars while somebody else is making. And to your point, it's different for a 501(c)(3), and so, what would be an example of a 501(c)(3) in the district, as opposed to, let's say, like, our baseball team, maybe?
Sure. So, an example is, you know, our VMA-
Okay.
Both VMAs are 501(c)(3)'s.
So, I think that's an important distinction, is that a, a lot of what we're talking about applies, I think, to primarily athletics-
That's correct.
Because our vocal and performing arts-
Sure.
Both high schools are 501(c)(3)'s.
Right. A, a better example might be the John Burrows High School Football Organization has a 501(c)(3).
Okay.
You know, Ms. Tabit has some history and background on this, and-
Absolutely.
Some work on the fundraising side, so I'll-
Absolutely.
This was the first agenda item that, the minute I got finished reading it, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sports moved in the district, Ms. Tabit.
Yes, right. The thing that, that, most importantly, that I was appreciative of, that it's starting as a directive, and, and I think it's important, as we all know, that as a directive, the rules are laid out, and so, no one can say, I didn't know that, or, oh, but we've been doing it this way for decades, so we've always, you know, and I thought that was very important. And at my very first initial reading, as Dr. Paramo will tell you, I went, no way, this is not good for kids, we're not going to get decent coaches, you know, all those things that I worry about. But the fact that it was a directive, and not board policy, which is much tougher to put in place, and to change, that the directive, we could see how it goes, and, and I was willing, just for the sake of making sure that there was equity and fairness across the board, and that no one was taking, I shouldn't say that, and that it, that things were going well for everybody. So, I think, I think this is a, it's a good step, and we'll see how it goes. And I'm appreciative of Dr. Paramo, who's willing to say, let's, let's see how this goes, and we'll check it out. We'll check out fall, which I think football, at least at one school, is, is, but, they do most of their stuff in the summer, anyway. But, we'll see how it goes, and we should look back at it, maybe have a, a report, you know, after-
Absolutely.
Each major season. There's, there's fall, winter, and spring.
Yeah.
And we can just take a look to see how it goes. Were they able to get coaches? Because that's important. And quality coaches, you know, kid, people that are good for kids. And I, I just think that's important. So, I, so I'm, I'm all behind it, which is what I think you-
You bet.
Needed to hear.
You bet.
I'm just curious, so, I love the idea of actually then looking at how this goes. Is that a student affairs committee situation? Is sports there?
Absolutely.
In theory, okay.
Absolutely, because it's a part of student services, right?
Mm-hmm.
It falls in that lens, so that wheelhouse. But, I'm sorry, do you have any other questions? Excellent. You know, we can, well, there's a, you know, there's always a curriculum component to this, so we, you know, that, this is where shared governance works, right? So, we can talk about where this impacts the different aspects of this, and the kind of intersectional academic nature of this all. So, that's what I love. Ms. Tabit, go ahead.
I just have to say something to Mr., there's another thing on our calendar now. Sorry.
And they questioned the system. Anyway, it's here, I love it.
This is the point, deeper dives, okay. This is a long chain of pursuits of equity. When it comes to fundraising, it's hard work. It's really hard, and, and we found, you go too hard, too fast, guess what? You're dialing it back 90% anyway, in order to find that kind of perfect Goldilocks-style temperature that's going to work on this, as we pursue equity. It is indeed hard for some schools that, and again, mostly at the elementary level, we're not talking about secondary, secondary, they're both behemoths in fundraising in their own ways. But, yes, for schools on the hillside, for some schools, they, it's really challenging to raise $15,000. For other schools, it is very easy to raise $100,000. Some schools can not, not see books, you know, there are impacts across the board, and we're trying to do this right, but also trying to keep parent freedom central, and the ability to finance improved educational experiences for their kiddos, if they have the ability to do so. So, it's a really hard thing to navigate. Ms. Tabit has been a part of this conversation for quite literally longer than any of us, and it, it's been a real evolution. So, one, Dr. Paramo, I appreciate, again, as, as Ms. Tabit said, really, the approach to, to test, right, and, and to see what works. I do think that there is a lot of community input on this. I, I've probably received the most calls on this than I have on most items of, of recent note, with the exception of the accounting era. So, I, I do think that we need to formalize that in some way. I'm not talking about a formalized committee, it's not about that, but I do think listening groups, potentially parents from different teams, because this is going to impact differently, and I think people are worried about it. So, let's give them that venue, so where you can consolidate the very best of feedback on this, and bring it back, and adjust just as you desired, I think, in this pilot, that would be, so, listening sessions, something like that, so we can check in with those parents. Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? There's an aye from me. Five oh. That passes, that passes five oh, sorry, I was, onto item nine I, approval of the amended contract for the California Department of Rehabilitation Services.
Mr. President.
Dr. Aga Khanian.
I move that the Board of Education approves the amended contract between Burbank Unified School District and the State of California Department of Rehabilitation Services of, for the purpose of work experience for identified students in Week and Work Program, effective July 1, 2023, through June 30th, 2025, and the authority to sign the agreement be exercised pursuant to BUSD AR-3314 as presented.
Moved by Dr. Aga Khanian, seconded by Ms. Tabit, to move forward with item nine I. And there is a presentation on this, so we're going to ask Ms. Cuseo, yes, Ms. Cuseo, to move forward from there.
Thank you, President Ferguson. I'd like to ask Lori Schleinkoffer, who's our Workability and Week and Work Coordinator, to come to the podium to present, please.
Thank you for being here this evening.
Sure, thank you. We're just launching the presentation. Okay. Good evening, President Ferguson, members of the board, and members of the Burbank community. My name is Lori Schleinkoffer, and I have the privilege of serving as the Workability Week and Work Coordinator for Burbank Unified School District. I've been in this position for the past year, placing students with disabilities in jobs in the community, and it has been an extremely rewarding experience. I'm presenting to you the BUSD Department of Rehabilitation Contract Augmentation. There it is. Okay. What is Week and Work? The California Department of Rehabilitation provides employment resources for California students with disabilities through the Week and Work Program. Specifically, students with disabilities receive services such as paid work experiences, where the Department of Rehabilitation subsidizes student wages as an incentive for employers to hire our students. On the screen are some of the other services, DOR funds, such as job exploration- DOR funds such as job exploration and training. BUSD, oh, sorry, there it is. BUSD has had a relationship with DOR since 2016 through the Weekend Work Program. Here are the terms of the current contract. It was signed last year and has a three-year duration. The total contractual amount of the current contract is $173,400 per year. DOR funds 20% of the salaries of the coordinator and the career vocational assistant, which helps offset costs to the general fund. DOR also funds student wages. Historically, students with IEPs were served through the contract with up to 100 hours of paid work experience per student. Goals for students placed in the current contract are, were 68 for this year, 65 for next year, and 62 for the following year. This year, we placed 110 students, which was a banner year for our students and way above our targeted goals. I highly recommend the new augmented contract. I'd like to review some of the reasons why with you. Most importantly, it provides more resources to place more Burbank students with disabilities in jobs in the community, and aligns with the district goal for more special education students to become college and career-ready. Changes to the contract impact the next two fiscal years, and for, it accounts for a total increase over the next two years of $361,800 in funding for our district. Total contract amounts will be augmented by $187,1000 in this coming year and $174,6000 in the 24-25 school year. The differential there is $12,500 funding support for John Burrows High School's community-based instruction program for their moderate, severe special education students. It provides support for that program, and this is a new portion of that contract. DOR will be funding 40% of the coordinator and the career vocational assistant salaries, along with student wages. This is an increase from the 20% that they currently fund, and it makes for a more equitable distribution of staff salary funding between our two grants. We have this grant, which comes from the Department of Rehabilitation, and another grant that funds student workers, which is the Workability Grant through the California Department of Ed. Students with IEPs and 504 plans will now be served through the augmented contract with up to 300 hours of paid work experience per student, which is a big difference from the current 100 hours. And goals for students placed for this coming year would be 115 students, and for the following year would be 110 students. We are already serving this amount of students with paid job experiences, so this serves as our new baseline. The expectation is that we will place 130 students or more this coming year. These are the pool of students we currently market to for jobs with IEPs. Not all students in the pool are eligible for placement due to the requirements for one-to-one extensive supports for some of those kiddos. DOR does not fund one-to-one aid support. Additionally, students must meet eligibility criteria regarding grades, attendance, and discipline. This is the new pool of students who we would like to expand services to. This allows us to market to 57% more students. Students with 504 plans are general education students who have been identified with a disability. Historically, due to limits on funding, we were unable to serve this population sufficiently. We placed only seven 504 students this year. These additional funds will allow us to expand placement services to a much larger pool of students. This is the number of students placed over the past few years. As you can see on the right, there's the 110 students that we've placed this year in paid work experiences. Next year, we're planning on placing, as I indicated, 130 students. The augmentation covers an increase in the minimum wage. It would cover more hours per each individual student, as I brought up previously, from 100 to 300 hours, and it would cover the cost of increasing students' placements to 130 or more. Prior years are not directly comparable, as many students worked only 10 hours or less, so that's why they're not up there. You can see 2021 was impacted by COVID significantly. These are our community business partners. I'd like to highlight what a great partner the city has been with the Burbank Animal Shelter, the Burbank Public Library, and the Burbank Arts and Education Foundation. We have many different areas of career exploration for our students, and this allows us to tailor work experiences to align with transition plans and student IEPs. As you can see, we have areas such as animals, childcare, food service, grocery, library, medical, dental, pharmacy, retail, and STEAM, that's a newer one. We're really proud of the addition of 5D Spectrum. We have students working on web design. And the Burbank Arts and Education Foundation, we have students working on their social media campaigns. And we're still onboarding more partners. This augmentation would be a win-win for both the Burbank Unified School District students and the community. Approval of the augmented contract is recommended because BUSD will receive an increase of $361,800 over the current contracted funding amounts. More students with disabilities will receive value-added paid work experiences for a longer amount of hours, increasing BUSD students that are college and career-ready. The distribution of salaries between our two grants is more equitable. And importantly, there is no financial impact on BUSD, other than reserving additional working capital as DOR pays with a delay. I believe this would be a terrific opportunity for our students and for our community. Thank you so much. Are there any questions?
Oh, who, now who's my friend? No, just kidding. Ms. Ponser Camp Car. Then we'll go to Ms. Tabbett. Then, nope, we're going, we'll get there.
This is so exciting. Thank you for this. And I'll, I'll just say, in my check-in with Dr. Pramo, he brought up how excited he was about this program and, and the progress that we're making here. And this is unbelievable, and I think so exciting for our kids. And you answered a lot of the questions that I had, as I was kind of just reading through the, the board packet. One outstanding question, and I'll just say that, like, I'm super excited that one of the places that we're employing kids is actually at the district. I really love that we can, we can show the, the local partners that are participating in this, because those are places that I certainly frequent, and I'm ready to frequent them more, in terms of supporting our kiddos. I'm curious about how you've, have you seen this set students up for more kind of permanent employment, once they're done with the program? And, or are these kind of jobs that, that students kind of come into while they're part of the program, and then that's giving them job experience that they're taking elsewhere, and then those kind of spots open up for kids that are continuing to stay in the program?
We absolutely see students getting jobs through this on their own after this experience. For example, a lot of the students that work at Smart and Final ultimately end up getting jobs at Smart and Final. There's also, we had a student who just got a, who works at Journeys and is on his way to being a manager at the mall. We have students, they're prior students that are working now managing other students at the Burbank Animal Shelter. So this is an experience that leads to a lot of more permanent positions for our students. That's the ultimate goal, especially, it's just very important that they get that on, on the job experience. And we have these businesses, when they sign the contract, they say that they are open, if the students get a good review, to considering them for a potential hire.
One of my questions was going to be, who are our partners? And then you answered it. Will you keep us up to date, up to speed, as you onboard more?
Absolutely.
Send an email, something we should be sending to the community? As a community member who's supporting our students, I'd like to support those businesses when I can. So, and I can share with my friends, hey, you know, go to Journeys, because some of our students are working there or, or wherever else. So if you would do that, I would greatly appreciate it.
Absolutely. And we would appreciate from you guys, any recommendations that you have for companies that we could reach out to in the community. Many of the, many of you may know business owners in the community that would be willing to work with us every time we're out in the community. And this is my team over here. This is Cheryl Powell and Marilyn Whitney. And they work really, really hard. We are a team. Every time they're out in the community, we're looking to make these connections, to build more opportunities for our students. So whatever you guys can do for us, that would be great in terms of connecting us with potential employers.
So what, what we will do, because this is going to be, like, everybody's jumping. So this is great. It's like, you know, one, we will bring this to a student services meeting to talk about this first and foremost, not to review the work in any heavy way, right? Like, this, this is numbers, right? These are numbers that tell the story. And I'm going to get back to everybody else. But I wanted to say, we're, let's do that. I do think it is important, you know, to have a window sticker of some sort that says, these are the businesses that support our SPED program. It's something that you've said before, Dr. Agakanyan, so that's before you jumped in. I was like, he's going to say it. Get a sticker going, right? Something that says, right, they're showing up for our community, all members of our community. So with that, so appropriate deference to you, who have always tried to create business partnerships. And we'll go from there. Dr. Weisberg was, she jumped in before you jumped in, so I'm going to go to her first, and then I'll come to you.
I just wanted to thank all three of you. My brother participated in this program when he was in school, and it benefited him enormously. I also hope that we could ask you to come back and, at the end of the year, and just tell us about how the year has gone, not just when there's sort of a contract, but this is such phenomenal work, and I want more people to hear about it. So if we could just come back, I know it's a little, I know it's extra work and it's late, but I would love to, to see and hear more about the, the program.
Absolutely. I also, I mean, I'm hoping to connect with the Chamber of Commerce, too, for Burbank, just because that would be a good resource for us, you know, to connect with more businesses in the community as we expand, because we were able to work with DOR to bring on so much more money.
I will do an email intro tomorrow, between you and Jamie Keizer, who absolutely...
Is a BUSD alumni.
She is an alumni and is somebody who I know, whose values completely align with this, and in quite an opportunity for the chamber to really, to build with us. So, Dr. Agakanyan.
Thank you, and thank you for mentioning the sticker. So for businesses out there who are interested, what are the requirements? Can someone, sometimes people are working with a government agency, and they go, "Oh, my God, I gotta do all this paperwork," or is there a link they can go and look at the requirements, fill out an application, and apply for this?
Right now, the businesses, the new businesses that we onboard, I go out and visit them personally. Like, we just onboarded the Burbank Bike Shop this year.
Yes.
So I went out to them. We have a contract that we have them sign, what they will do, what their, what the specific laws are that they have to abide by to work with students in our district. And I can send that to you, but I explain it to them. I walk them through each step.
Yeah. Do we have this on a website for people listening right now who want to go apply?
As of now, we're working on our Google site for the Workability Weekend Work Program to bring it live. And I've been talking with the Burbank Unified School District web managers about putting a link to it. But we don't have a link for that. I bring it as of right now, but I can email it to you, and you can send it to whoever you'd like, a copy of our contract, and we can review it more. And we can get it up there. We can get it up there soon, as soon as the Burbank website managers will do so. It's just, I've been bringing it out personally, bringing them a hard copy. We also onboarded Otto's Hungarian Deli, an import store, which is right near, he's also, Tom is a JBHS alumnus, and he was excited to be brought onto the program. I bought over and explained the detail. It's, I found it's worked, worked better than just having them read a contract and sign. They want to meet us. They want to see what the program is about. They want to see the face of the program, and have it explained to them, because there is some legalese in the contract. So, but I'll be happy to email it to you, and you can send it out to anybody you know, and we can post it on the website, if that's what you'd like.
A number of people can call who are interested, too, right?
So why don't we do this, you know, one, we don't want to outpace our technology, which, we've tried, folks, we've tried, okay, to get improvements, right? We're doing the best we can. But we don't want to outpace what the program's ready for. We don't want to, and you guys are ready. You guys are out there. You're doing the work. But when it's appropriate, let's do an e-news on that, and then that can get distributed more widely, or whatever's felt to be appropriate, and the most useful. It probably is good to do it in coordination with the chamber, potentially, if that's something that they can offer, that would be lovely. I don't know. I'm not going to speak for the chamber. I can't and haven't been able to do so before. So, you know, but is that, is that fantastic? Thank you. And I think we're all excited. Why? Because this represents the very best of our values. And to the team who's doing this work, you're representing the very best of this district right now, getting these, you know the story, right? You know how important this is, right? Giving them belonging, right? A path towards independence. Celebrate, right? Celebrate that. That is the good work we do here, right? For all the critical things that happen, right? For all the things we do. These folks are out every single day knocking on doors, doing what it takes, making people feel comfortable with bringing in some of our most vulnerable populations who struggle with independence, the need to be independent. They want to be independent, but they can't find that employer who's going to say, "I see you. I see your value, and I see what you have to contribute." Boom. That's what we're doing right now. So this money, it speaks to so much hard work. So I see that. Thank you. More of this, eight times, you know, let's keep it coming. Rightfully so, Dr. Pramo, who's, everybody here was jumping off the page to get this done. And there's a reason for it. For those families, right, who worry, and they do, right? Where are these kids going? Where, these young adults? Where are they going? How are they going to do this? For 100 more kids, right, in different moments, we now have answers for them. For those who have 504s, right, who, their authenticity at times is so challenged, right? Because they don't need the bigger adjustments. They, they need the small accommodations. They are seen by this plan, too.
Yes.
Huge. So to our chamber partners, blow this up. This is worth investing in. To our city partners, thank you. Thank you, thank you. So I, we will, let's do and figure out the recognition program to do that. If it's, we'll figure that out as we can. Dr. Agakanyan's always on it. So I think that that would be great. But let's get this voted on, so you guys can go back to doing the work. Thank you for taking care of our kids and representing the very best of our values on this front. So, we do have a motion on this front, and a second. And we're all very eager to vote. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion, opposed? That motion carries five zero. Thank you so much. And by the way, that was a staff report. Thank you very, very much for that.
Thank you.
Really well done.
Thank you.
We done good today, folks, you know? Not, I mean, we, we got to vote. But what a win for our SPED teams who work so hard and who do not get victories every day, who work hard and don't get that every day. Congrats. Great. With that, I do, I did receive a note, just that as we were reading off the agenda, or as we were reading off the motion for item nine G, so pulling that back, that is the ratification of employee reclassification job descriptions and, job descriptions and certificated supervisors and managers. certificated supervisors and manager, manager's salary schedule A, classified supervisors and managers' salary schedule B, and confidential employee salary, uh, schedule C. Uh, we just, we read that off wrong, so I want to pull back that motion, uh, and basically, so I will move to reconsider that motion. Uh, what, what that does is says, hey, we're going to edit undo, uh, and start from ground zero, so I'm asking the board to kind of nullify its first vote so we can make the correct motion, uh, which I will do after that. So I will move that we reconsider, uh, the motion made on item nine G, uh, earlier in this evening's meeting. Moved by myself, seconded by Dr. Weisberg. Ms. Keterio, thank you for always keeping us on track. Um, and so we are able to fix this. Um, motions for reconsideration, by the way, needs to be made in the same meeting, um, so that's why it's important that we do so now. Um, any further discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. That motion carries five zero, and with that, I will move, where's the motion language? J. Uh, no, we now need to make a new motion. Yeah, Mike, well, don't throw me off, folks, I love y'all, but like, you're throwing me off. Okay, so we'll go. Uh, I will move, uh, that the Board of Education ratify the employee reclassification jobs descriptions, uh, and certificated supervisors and managers' salary schedule A, classified supervisors and manager scal- manager's salary schedule B, and confidential employee's salary schedule C, effective July one, 2022. Uh, that would be retroactive to July first, 2022, uh, as amended. Any further discussion on that? That was really important that we caught, so thank you for those who heard that and, and made sure that that was right. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. Thank you for flying with me on that one. Uh, and with that, we will go to, uh, number nine J on our agenda, which is the acceptance of gifts. Can I get a motion?
Does anyone, okay. Um, Mr. President, I move, or I, yeah, I guess I moved that the Board of Education take formal action by accepting the following gifts to the district and the board president convey appreciation to the donors who really and truly, these are very appreciated, in a moment of seriousness, because we always have some fun with this, but those donations, um, get some programs by, and they're greatly appreciated, and we thank those folks for thinking of us, uh, when they're putting their money places. So thank you.
Second. Moved by Ms. Tavitt, seconded by Dr. Agakanyan to accept the gift, the gift report, this time with serious tone. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. You bet, you know, it, it is serious. There you go. So, um, we have a, a number of gifts to accept, or that we have accepted today, and so we do communicate our most sincerest thanks, uh, to those, uh, who are making a difference, right? We saw it a little bit today earlier in the agenda, and now we're going to see it in new ways. Uh, to Pretty Bird LLC, who has donated five hundred, uh, $5,500 to be used for materials and supplies at John Muir Middle School, uh, to BAM Productions, Inc., uh, which has donated $2,500 to be used for materials and supplies at Muir Middle School, uh, to America Online Giving Foundation. Yes, remember those discs, everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah, still given. Uh, uh, for $670.75 to be used as needed at Roosevelt Elementary School, uh, to Peter Lars Incorporated, Cornerstone Photography wishes to donate, uh, to the district $1,152.21 to, uh, to be used as needed for materials and supplies at Roosevelt Elementary School, uh, to the Burrows High School IMA Booster Club, uh, who has donated $40,000, uh, to be used for purchasing band and IMA uniforms, uh, and costumes at John Burrows High School. That's a long time, uh, coming and that's a lot of work. Um, uh, to the Washington Elementary Fundraising Committee, which has donated $32,000, and $165.43 to be used, eh, in the 23, 24 school year at Washington Elementary School, uh, to the Stevenson Elementary Fundraising Committee, which has donated to the district $76,549.94 to be used in the 23, 24 school year at Stevenson Elementary, uh, to the Miller Elementary Fundraising Committee, which wishes to donate $7,105.25 to be used in the 23, 24 school year, uh, to Jefferson Elementary, uh, Fundraising Committee, which has, uh, donated $2,073.85 to be used in the 23, 24 school year, uh, to the Bret Hart Fundraising Committee, which, uh, has donated $114,011.69 to be used in the 23, 24 school year, uh, to the Emerson Elementary Fundraising Committee, which has donated $60,904.19, uh, to the Edison Elementary Fundraising Committee, which has donated $31,386.95, and to the Disney Elementary Fundraising Committee, which has donated $3,165.90. Um, this tells the tale starkly of what our school communities, um, have to work really hard to build, and whether it's the $3,000, um, or the hundreds, you know, that is a tale of two different experiences. And we are working daily to try and find that right medium. But to those parents, it doesn't matter. We want you to know, one, our, our, our teachers, our employees show up every single day to deliver a high-quality education for your kiddo. Uh, we need to do more on equity, that's pretty clear here. Um, but that $3,000 often is a lot harder than that $100,000 sometimes to get, and I want to acknowledge those parents, uh, who gave and sometimes worked extra so that they could give. Um, that's absolutely worth being serious about. So with that, we will go to, uh, the consent agenda, and I'm not forgetting retirements. I see you, I see you thinking, Ms. Keterio has my back. Can I get, uh, a motion on the, uh, consent calendar, items 10A through 10AX as presented?
Uh, I wanted to poll.
We'll get a motion, and usually includes a poll component to that motion, so yes, I, so I will move, uh, consent calendars, item 10A through 10AX, except for which items board members wish to poll.
Second.
Moved by myself, seconded by Dr. Agakanyan, on the consent calendar, any items wishing to be polled?
Yes, I just have to figure out.
AA.
AA?
Ten, yeah, hold on. Oh my God. Yes. AA, 10AA.
Okay, I, uh, pulling item 10AA. Okay, so that would be.
Agreement for serv- professional services.
Got it. Any other items which board members wish to poll? Okay, so that will be, the consent calendar will be, uh, items 10A through 10Z and 10AB through 10AX, right? Thank you, thank you, you knew, you, you get that, anyway. Okay, um, that's basically pulling 10AA. Uh, any other discussion on this item? Are we pulling it to table, pulling it for questions? Do we? It, it usually is pull, if you pull for tabling, you should, we have to do a date certain usually, so, um, suggesting a-
Well, I, I want to ask very quickly before we decide, is, if we table this for further discussion, how does this negatively impact the department if we do this? Like, what, are there any ramifications if we talk, talk it through before and, and bring it back at the next agenda?
We can definitely bring it back to the next agenda.
Okay.
Okay. So, uh-
Yeah.
Next agenda, we can do, um, board members on questions, comments on this item, let's get them in now, or as soon as possible so that the department can move forward. If there is a need for potential services to be deployed and a ratification as a result to be deployed, in order to make sure that student needs are covered, let's make sure to do so. But again, I think there is some additional questions on this that we want to be able to answer. Is that good with my colleagues?
Absolutely. Are you going to ask now, are you going to send us questions?
So if we can have questions in by next week, midweek, that would be great. Does that work? Uh, for staff, I've, there's a sense of urgency around this, understood. Um, we have a role to play here, you have a role to play here.
Yes.
You guys are panicking for that reason, because you guys are wanting to deliver, we have an oversight responsibility. So let's meet that next Wednesday. When is the agenda due? Is that next Wednesday or is that sooner? Looking at folks.
Tomorrow?
Okay, so let's, so I will ask, we add it, add it to the agenda, um, but questions need to be in by Monday, if we can get that done. Okay, thank you, colleagues, thank you, uh, to departments who are helping and sharing, um, her own department. Uh, any other questions on this? Okay, so I, this is again, the motion on 10A through 10Z, 10AB through 10AX. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried five zero, uh, and item 10AA, uh, is, uh, tabled to next month, uh, pending the outcome of questions. Um, with that, we will go to, I believe, our final period of public comment, and then retirements. Schlossman, eh, does it say Schlossman? There you go. Ms. Schlossman.
You know, my daughter participates in the We Can Work program and I'm very grateful for it, and she's very grateful for it, and it's really a beneficial program to so many kids in the district, and I'm, I'm glad we participate in it. For many years, I've asked you folks to thank the participants, you know, and I'm, I'm aware that the participants receive certain benefits for hiring this group as well, but I still think they should be thanked and recognized. And, uh, most recently, you've called for your printing department to print up something, and you've acknowledged one person, I think it was Ms. Little, but that's it. And I know you're busy, but this item is, I think, so important and it just gets pushed off because there's always so much on your table. So I hope we'll get more than lip service, Mr. Agakanyan, and make something happen because I, I'd like to see it. I'd like to see these people recognized. I'd love to see a window sticker or, or something along those lines, I think that's a great idea. Uh, Mr. Ferguson, I wasn't shifting from one zip code to another regarding housing, I was merely pointing out that we already own a house, and perhaps there's something that could be done with that one house.
Okay.
That's all. And, uh, when you do it, I'm sure it will open up a whole bunch of questions, like a gift to public funds, um, who benefits, who gets the benefit? Are the taxpayers subsidizing it? And the fairness of all these things, it, it really calls into question a, a lot of areas of appro- of appropriateness. And I think I've mentioned before in the past that it, if you gave an incentive to property owners, if you partnered with the city, I think that you would find a number of people that want to help and want to have, um, people that are employed and get a steady paycheck, and that has value to a lot of property owners. So I think that you can accomplish what you want to accomplish and what I support, uh, without so much, you know, upheaval. I think it can be done, so I'd love to be a part of that discussion. Thank you, everybody, and drive safe tonight.
Thank you. Responses, any other cards on public comment? Seeing none, response to public comment, Dr. Pramo.
Thank you, sir, thank you for your comments, I appreciate it.
Uh, responses from my colleagues? Seeing none. Uh, Ms. Schlossman, I love that we can both celebrate tonight, the, the job placements programs, I love that we can celebrate that, um, that's huge, right? And, and that is also an example of neighborly, uh, exchange that exists in this community, so thank you. And by the way, you have advocated for years for recognitions, and, and this year we will get it done. Um, we're committed to that, we as a board committed to doing recognitions, uh, in different ways and overhauled that, and yes, Dr. Agakanyan was a part of making sure that that occurred and followed up for years to get that done, so I want to acknowledge that. Um, Ms. Schlossman, it sounds like you and I may need another breakfast or a time to catch up, um, if you are willing to talk on solutions. Again, I don't like recognizing, uh, when we really disagree because sometimes it's really about things that I believe are, are not your intention at times, other times, I think very much your intention, to be hurtful. Um, when we're talking solutions, game on. I have brought up your suggestion with members of the council, uh, as an approach. Um, it is similar in its nature to Section Eight, different in terms of payment programs potentially, and who would pay and the standards, et cetera. So I hear you, and I do want you to know that at times when your ideas, right, really have a runway, I, I will move with them and give you credit. Um, but let's keep to those at times because, uh, other stuff is just, is at times for many, it's disqualifying. Um, so with that, uh, I will go to retirements and recognize, uh, our amazing retirees, uh, who are wrapping up years of service, uh, to the school district, uh, to, uh, Kristana Kirin Uribe, uh, who is at Jefferson Elementary, uh, who, who began, uh, September second, 1993, it's a long time, Karen Solium at, uh, Stevenson Elementary, uh, who began her service on, uh, September 11th, 1989, year of my birth, thank you. Uh, wow, amazing. Carolyn Pearlstein, um, that's amazing, I mean, wow, whole, 34, yeah, 34 years, folks, uh, in, for our kids, amazing, sorry. Carolyn, uh, Pearlstein, we've had 40 years, we've had, it's, it's just, sorry, like, I, I see these and I just go, wow, right? Um, and Carolyn Pearlstein, uh, who began her service September 8th, 1988. So, um, to all these folks, uh, first of all, clearly, a well-deserved retirement, that's a lot of budget crisis come and gone. Nope, uh, nope, nope, you, you are right, well, thank you with the assist. Um, to Inez Casas, uh, who began her service, uh, in, on September 8th, 1998, uh, and to Kathy Crayla, ah, Kathy, uh, who began, uh, November 7th, 2003. Um, wow. Yeah, we're all reacting in real time, right? Every, you know, it, it is definitely a transitional period. Uh, to all of these folks, uh, please enjoy your retirement, uh, enjoy all the adventures that are ahead of you, independent of our school district, come back, volunteer, we always need the help, uh, and you know where everything is. Uh, so thank you so much, we so appreciate you, uh, and with that, we will adjourn, uh, in celebration of, of these folks and so many others and the accomplishments of tonight's meeting, so thank you, everybody, we're adjourned.